All right, I call to order this regular scheduled meeting. Folks. Okay. Call to order this regular scheduled meeting in the 34th City Council for December 12th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Everyone in attendance, if you could please silence your phones or communication devices to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Elso Wafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I was to introduce the father, but I believe he's not been able to come in at time. Is that correct? All right, so I'm going to give it a shot to give the invocation. When I give the invocation, everybody can please stand for the invocation, and those that can, please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Okay, let us pray. God, as we begin this meeting, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin making decisions for our neighbors, as we engage in a meaningful discussion and respect each person's opinion, that we keep in mind that the decisions we make today have a great impact on others and that we consider carefully and without bias. Therefore, we continue to remember that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is in the pursuit of doing what is truthful and just for the service of the great people that call Dearborn their home. Lastly, God, we ask for your protection for the police and fire personnel, our first responders, as they put their lives on the line each and every day to ensure the safety of residents in our community. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I knew this was going to be useful one day. I had it ready. All right. Mr. Clerk, first item of business.
Item number four resolution my council president Serini supported unanimously acknowledging Nicole Allward on being named as the 2023 Michigan School Librarian of the Year and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So at this time, we would like to acknowledge and congratulate Ms. Nicole Allward, does that pronounce that, Allward? On being named the Michigan School Librarian of the Year as presented by the Michigan Association of School Librarians. Ms. Allward works as a librarian at Etzel Ford High School in Dearborn, and today we celebrate her efforts to shape young minds and enrich our students in the community with love of the literature. We would like to present a citation from the city council to Ms. Allward and to take a photo up here at the front. So Ms. Allward, if you'd like to come up to the front. Did you want to have anything to say? We're going to come down, but did you want to have anything that you had to say? Or we're going to come down. All right. Counsel, if we'd like to just come down in the front? Mayor? Yeah, Ms. Allward, thank you very much. As we spoke earlier, I mean, today's technology and digital world, literature is still front and center and has a lot to do with the development of the person in the mind itself, so we do appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next item? All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So on the public comment portion, folks, we have some public cards, comment cards. If you did not fill one out, that's fine. We can have you stand up once we get to that portion and have you come up. Keep in mind, the public comment is reserved for the first 30 minutes regarding anything that you would like to address the city council regarding city business. And also keep in mind that if you are addressing a specific item of the council, that we asked that you wait for that item so it can be addressed at that time. And I know at first we have our state rep, Ms. Erin Burns. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members.
Good to see you.
Mayor and Clerk, good to see you all. Just wanted to take a few moments to share kind of some end of year highlights from the legislature and then talk a little bit about the new year as well. Folks may have heard or read in the paper, a few weeks ago, Governor Whitmer signed a Clean Energy Package, so our goal is now to have the state of Michigan to a 100% renewable energy standard by the year 2040, which is very exciting. These bills will really help move forward on large-scale solar and wind projects, so we're very excited about that. We've also been working hard on voting rights, protecting elections workers, and also helping to kind of rein in some of these AI deep fakes and other elements that we're really seeing kind of infiltrate our elections and those processes. So those are a few of the bigger packages that we've been working on toward the end of the year. The legislature has adjourned for the year, but we will be back in action on January 10th. And of course, I'm always available along with my fellow reps for Dearborn, Rep Farhat and Rep Whitsett, as well as State Senator Santana. So just wanted to share a few of those quick updates, wish everyone hopefully a happy and peaceful end of this year and a blessed new year as well. So, thank you all.
Well, thank you very much, Rep Burns. We do appreciate it. I want to say, I can't, I don't want to say Erin.
I know. You're fine.
We really appreciate it, and we know there's been a lot of changes on the state level, especially with, you know, us going as a city of Dearborn from one representative to three.
Sure.
But we do appreciate the work you do, and it does matter, and we do appreciate it. So thank you for coming and giving us the update.
Of course. Thank you all for having me. I appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, so now we have some comment cards. Once I get through those, I'll ask if there's anybody who has another comment. We have Mary Nemeth? Nemeth? Yes, sorry. Nemeth, okay, thank you. So just a kind reminder, please state your name and address for the record. The clerk will keep a three-minute time limit, and they'll let you know when there's 30 seconds left.
Okay, I'm going to talk fast then.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm here mostly so you all see my face. I want you to know who I am by looking at me. The last time I came into a council meeting was, you know, during March Powell days, and Mr. Durany, I worked with him when he was just getting the trolleys. So I've been here a while. I am a Dearborn resident. I've been lifelong. Howard Elementary, Dearborn High School, Adams, Henry Ford, Madonna, and then U of M. Dearborn. I've been a resident for 71 years, bought the house across the street from my parents, so I've lived on Oak my whole life. So I've really been advocating Dearborn for a lot of years. I'm retired from stout middle school now. I was in the mass appraisal back when we did the mass appraisal. I was in real estate, so I was a Level 3 assessor with that. So I've been doing things in Dearborn the whole time. I'm now with the A U W. I just did that book sale. I was the chair for that book sale at the skating rink. And now I'm looking for my next venture, and that's a senior commission. I really would like to be appointed to be on the senior commission. I went to the meeting. I go to the senior center almost on a daily basis, and I'm with these seniors, and they talk to me, and I have a voice. Most of them will just stay quiet. There's some things that have been going on over there that we need to fix, and I'm not a whiner. I know the people that are whining, and I let that go, you know, off my shoulders. And I know the people that really have a valid thing, and one of the things that's happening at the senior center is the cutting of the people that are working there has caused some problems. Just to give you an idea, the lady who does Meals on Wheels today was the receptionist. We needed to do Meals on Wheels for the seniors, but that's where they're getting their food. So things like that are happening, and I'm more of a person that doesn't say, this is what's happening. I'm more of a person that's going to say, this is what's happening, and this is what I think we could do to fix it, and you're going to say, well, this is why we can't do that, and then I'm going to say, well, then let's go this way. So I just came to say that I have applied, and I did put my resume in. I haven't heard anything yet, but I would really like to be appointed to be on that senior commission so that I can be a voice for these seniors and an advocate for them, because most of them can't advocate for themselves.
You have 30 seconds.
That's it.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Nemeth. We do get the applications. They go through the mayor's department, and then they come for council confirmation, so we'll be looking forward to seeing them in the future.
Okay, I did it a while ago, so.
Yes, it depends on the openings and the timing, but thank you so much for coming forward and introducing yourself.
The chief of staff is in the back.
Mayor?
Ms. Nemeth, the chief of staff, Zainab, will just connect with you right now.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, next we have Teresa Turns.
Hello, nice to see you. I'm coming back. I watched Dora, and next time. Hello, my name is Jude. Yesterday, I watched Dora and Boots yesterday, and I watched Dora's books too.
Thank you.
Yay. I hope you can hear me. It's kind of hard to hear back there.
Yeah, is it light up in front of you?
Light up?
Right in front of you.
Okay, it is, it is. I'm Teresa Turns. I live at 8 Abbott Lane in Dearborn, and I want to say hello to the mayor, city council, Mr. Durany, and the fabulous people that are here tonight. When I mentioned I was going to talk to our city council again, the topic of local regulation for short-term rentals and Airbnb's, a few of my neighbors said I was just wasting my time because our city council doesn't care. I do believe that you do care, and I think it's worth talking about again. We have three and possibly four Airbnb's in duplexes within 150 yards of each other on Brewster Street in Spring Wells Park. I say possibly four because the fourth duplex was a rental and has recently been housing multiple guests with varied license plates coming and going. I do not think this is an Airbnb because it does not meet the standards that an Airbnb requires to get those five-star ratings. I'm reminding you that a duplex situation is more often sharing a common driveway and garage with one neighbor and the other neighbor sharing the building. So the importance of knowing thy neighbor is vital and also rewarding. The rewards of living in a neighborhood are numerous, as you know. Many of you live in our Dearborn neighborhoods. My home, I've been living in Spring Wells Park for 23 years, and I didn't just look at the property when I decided to move there. I looked at the neighborhood. I looked at everybody that was living around me, seeing if they had kids, if they were taking care of their property, so I decided to move. But I found this in Spring Wells Park changing. With the addition of the Airbnb's, there are a lot of empty homes that are rentals where the landlords do not take care of the exterior property. I have called the city, but the response has been disappointing, and I want you to hear that. The response has been disappointing. Housing for families that want to send their kids to our schools, our valuable schools, take advantage of the city and recreation and civic activities that we have. That's a real attraction for anybody that wants to live in Dearborn. So now we have property-managing companies buying these rentals, and that's not neighborhood to me. So some of the rewards of living in a neighborhood are not often known. For example, we had a loose dog running in our common areas in Spring Wells Park for two weeks, and a task force of neighbors using text, home cameras, and connections with rescue organizations were successful in capturing the dog. I know this may sound silly and simple, but if we did not have the value of having neighbors knowing each other with great outcomes, the dog is doing well and is soon to be adopted.
You have 30 seconds.
I want you to hear this also. Dearborn Animal Control was called many times but never showed. We also had a Santa visit using the Dearborn bus, and thanks to, we had lots of fun with the families, but one of the stops, there were very few kids, in fact, no kids at all. And that means that we are, we have people that aren't bringing their kids into our neighborhood, and that's very unusual for Spring Wells Park. I was informed today by the office of Senator Santana that House Bill 4722 of 2022 died in December of 2022. It would have prohibited local government from adopting or enforcing zoning ordinances on Airbnb's and short-term rentals.
I'm sorry, time has expired.
So I'm asking you to do something to support, to get rid of the Airbnb's, the short-term, you know, to regulate them so that we have our neighborhoods back once again. And I have brought many neighbors from Spring Wells Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Joseph LeBlanc. Let me try to hear. I'm sorry. How do you pronounce it, sir?
It's Lee Bling.
Lee Bling. Joseph LeBlanc. Go ahead. No, no. No, you already had your turn. We have to wait.
I have a turn.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just give us a second.
Hello, my name is Jude, and I watch SpongeBob, and it's See When See Spider, and Old Madonna Had a Fun, and Hey Diddle Diddle, the Cat and the Fiddle, that counters over, watch Twinkle Twinkle Little Star, how I wonder what you are, ah, ba, ba, da, we're so high, like a diamond in the sky, twinkle, twinkle, little star, how I wonder what you are.
I know, I know. We need to have a meeting. Thank you, thank you. We understand. Okay, one meeting. Okay, we have to continue the meeting, so thank you for your comments. We had, you had your turn, and we have to have someone else have their turn, okay? Let's do this. Why don't we, why don't we do this? Let's, if my colleagues would like, I think we could suspend the rules and move, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move item 31 to the front of the public comment, and we'll pick up public comment. Okay, so we have an offer to suspend the rules by myself, supported by Councilwoman Pro Tab, Herrick. Does anyone have, has anybody objected to a unanimous roll on the suspension of rules? No objection, so therefore we have suspension of rules. So, Mr. Clerk, I ask you to move item 31. Ma'am, we're going to come back to it. Move item 31 to the front of the meeting, sir. Clerk, can let's take that item now.
Item number 31, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Herrick, authorizing a cooperative contract purchase from Penture LLC through a source of a cooperative contract in the amount of $2,996,145.05 for inclusive playgrounds at Ford Woods and Crowley Park, also authorizing the finance director to transfer $2,996,146 from the 634 Fund and Project ARPA-25 to the 401 Projects in I-26524 and I-26324, and to recognize and appropriate the transfers in the 401 Funds and Projects I-26524 and I-26324, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The accessible playground equipment for Ford Woods and Crowley Parks has reached the end of its projected lifespan currently. The city is committed to exclusive parks and is requesting approval for new designs and layouts for both parks, which embrace the concept of custom-designed exclusive playgrounds. The renovation and reimagining of both parks will include new sidewalks that make access to playgrounds easier for everyone, pavilions, shade, site finishings, and fence, and the fence around the playground area with communication signs and symbols. The Parks and Recreation Department, in conjunction with purchasing, recommends the purchase via cooperative contract for an exclusive playground, which, yeah, we have one on the monitor there to see. At Crowley Park, at the cost of $1,498,951.60, and at Ford Woods Park, with a cost of $1,497,193.45, for a total cost of $2,996,145.05. This project will launch in the summer of 2024, and it takes approximately 10 to 12 weeks to build. Any questions or comments from my colleagues regarding item 31 and the playscape? Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I'm appreciative of the administration for bringing this forward to council, using the American Recovery Act funds and making them available to make these improvements and renovations at two of our parks. It's going to make these parks more accessible to everyone, and I'm just hoping that this is the beginning of many changes going forward, making all of our parks accessible to all. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I'll go get Councilman Elso Wafi.
Thank you, Council President. Today's a very special day for me. Two years ago, when I was running for office, for this office, and talking to families throughout the city, it became clear that the city of Dearborn lacked a park that accommodates our residents who are differently abled. It was disheartening to hear that while most of us enjoy our local parks in the neighborhood, families with disabled children have to drive 45 minutes plus outside the city of Dearborn to cities like Ann Arbor to provide their children with disabilities the simple joy of a park. Or as one parent described it, his disabled child as the invisible Dearborn resident. Immediately after taking office, I pledged to make this a priority for me. After demonstrating to Mayor Abdullah Hamud and my council colleagues the gap in services to the most vulnerable residents, without hesitation, it was quickly a priority for them as well. A priority to bridge the gap for sometimes forgotten invisible residents who struggles and triumphs have often go unnoticed, who along with their families navigate a world not always designed to accommodate them. This accessibility park will serve residents like James here, a 10-year-old resident with a personality that outshines any obstacles. James usually maneuvers through life with the help of a wheelchair, yet his outgoing nature and upbeat spirit make him an inspiration to us all. And also Rami, a five-year-old Dearborn resident with an undying love for Spider-Man, who faces a challenge of a rare condition causing global development delay. Playing at a typical playscape in our city parks is not an option for James or Rami, but this accessibility park will open doors for them, make mobility easy for James, and playtime for Rami and his older sister Leila and younger brother Hadi a reality. In supporting this accessibility park, we're not merely investing in infrastructure, we are investing in the visibility, dignity, and happiness for all our residents. I extend my deepest appreciation to Mayor Abdullah Hamud, his administration, and my council colleagues for their unwavering support and commitment to fostering a community that embraces all its members. By investing in this project, we're saying loud and clear, not just in words, but in action, that every child matters, and we're dedicated to making our invisible residents visible. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Paris? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. And Councilman Elso Wafi, well said. I can remember all of us sitting in a conference room, looking at some proposed information for the peace parks and what we were thinking about doing in the future. And I remember a presentation that was brought forward by our councilman at that particular time, in particular to emphasize, too, that, you know, Dearborn had no such parks, and how far do our residents have to traverse to be able to go to a park that has similar facilities? And it really drove that home and emphasized that to me, the need to do this. And we were thinking all along that we were going to go along with one park that had these facilities, but what happened? The need is great, and I think we recognize that. The administration recognized that, so instead of just one, there are two parks. So for that, I appreciate my colleagues on council, and I appreciate the administration. This is something that is well-deserved in our community for those that want to partake in that type of equipment at the parks, and I thank you to everybody to bring this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. Councilman Hamud?
So I'm not going to repeat everything Councilman Elso Wafi said because it was very well said, but I think it's also important to stress, one of my big concerns when it comes to investment in parks is both, you know, are we using our current land effectively and what's the long-term maintenance aspect when it comes to a lot of these things? So I am pleased with the plan that we have in front of us. I think it's very helpful that we're going to be using existing parks that people are familiar with and that people do currently utilize that are in the neighborhoods. And I think we do have planning going on right now, and then this is going to be part of our longer-term plan to not just ensure that these parks are built, but to also ensure that these parks are maintained, to keep maintaining that high level of service that we do strive to provide here in Dearborn. So I think we can do better than we have done in the past, and I think based on the plan in front of us and some of the ongoing plans that we have that we're going to improve going forward, I hope that we can commit to providing this service not only, you know, when these parks are first built, but going into the future for, you know, our next generations of people. So thank you very much to Councilman Elso Wafi and to the administration for bringing this item forward.
All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to have the mayor to give an opportunity to give a little more detail because my understanding is, as well as, and I appreciate the fact that these parks are definitely a need, and as the council has indicated, we did budget it as well. But my understanding also is that we're also including this, some type of inclusive park, inclusive scapes in all the other, in other parks as well, so it's not just solely in one area and/or another. So Mayor, would you like to touch on that?
Of course, thank you so much. So I'll give the background. I think I saw somebody carrying the city council newsletter. And that newsletter talks about the $30 million Peace Parks Grant that we received. I think folks tend to confuse that we're spending $30 million on building these new parks. We're actually spending $30 million across our entire park system. You know, last year, we embarked on quite the mission to transform green spaces and public spaces after learning that during COVID, it was really during, it was really in outdoor spaces where people had an outlet, an outlet to connect with neighbors and with family. And when we embarked, we submitted the grant proposal to Wayne County, and for every dollar that we pledged, from the grant dollars we received from the federal government, we got a three-to-one match, and that's how we got the $30 million in total. And it was ranked one of the most transformative projects by Wayne County, submitted in all of Wayne County, which we were proud of. And so the parks that we have before you, in that grant proposal, we talked about building inclusive playsapes so that children, so that all children in Dearborn had an opportunity to enjoy our public spaces, and that's what's before you today. I think what's also important to note is that we took the feedback of the families present today in a design. And so we put out a competition amongst the manufacturers of such playsapes, and eight designs were submitted. And then we brought in our Parks and Recreation, our Disability Commission, as well as many families who have firsthand insight into what features you need, and we asked them to rank those park designs. And the two before you are the park designs that came to the top of that list. And the two features that are not included in the park designs, there will be a full fence around the entire playscape at each park, so you don't have to stress about your child within the playscape. And then the swing sets will also be tandem swings, so you can actually sit with your child in the same swing and enjoy that accessibility, which I got to experience at a park in a neighboring city. So we're bringing those features here. And so to Councilman, to the Council President's point, we decided that we're going to put a stake in the ground at ensuring inclusivity in every investment that we make. And so we have a new park going in at Wyoming in Gold. And so although it's not a fully inclusive park, we're providing hardscape in that park as well as wheelchair-accessible swing. Then we also modified a new park and splash pad going into Morningside Park, which is in the south end, to also have a fully hardscape at the bottom to make it more inclusive, as well as having the wheelchair swing, which we're going to try to implement at every park across the whole city. And so every new park, at least under this administration with the support of council, will also be hardscape. So gone are the days of gravel and wood chip, which make it very difficult for variously able children and families to enjoy. And so those are the types of investments that we're proud to be making, as well as we've set aside some money to also make sure that we're improving the accommodations at our various restrooms, to make sure that those are fully inclusive and that all of our parents and families can also get the need out of those facilities as well. And so we're excited for this project. It's been a long time coming. Again, a credit to our grants director that submitted a phenomenal application, our county commissioner that assisted us at the county, and all of our state partners, and obviously to this council. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I know that we have, thank you. I know we have some people patiently waiting to speak on this item from the, from the audience, so please step forward, and you could get your time at the microphone to talk about our playscape.
As they step forward, so you're aware, the theme at Ford Woods Park is fresh water, so you'll see a fish, a dragonfly, bunny rabbit in various areas. And the theme at Crowley Park is like, it's manufacturing. It's like a car plant with a, you know, with a monster truck, and so we'll see if Ford wants to sponsor.
Just your name for the record.
Hi, guys, how are you? I'm so sorry about what happened earlier.
That's okay.
And I have a daughter, but she's out of sick, and it's out of control. My name is Amamatar. I'm a Dearborn resident for 20 years now. I'm a Dearborn resident for 20 years and up more. I would love to thank everyone about the idea of the park because we really suffered best in the years because, you know, our kids just grow up, but their, their brain is still like a kid. They like the park, play, swings, and there's no place to fit them. Like, I'm talking about my daughter. She's big enough, I, when I go in the summer, there's no park for her where she can play and do the stuff that they like and the activity. So I would like to thank everyone here that they gave me the opportunity to talk about it. It's really, really nice from Mona that she mentioned that we are welcome to come here. And I'm so sorry that our kids not like quiet while you guys are talking, but I really appreciate your patience and everybody, like, I want to apologize to everyone here because it's really out of our control. But I was really excited to come and tell you how amazed I am when I was, when she told me about the park, Mona, and when I heard it, and I would love to thank Hamood about it because we really, really need it as a parent, especially in the summer when the kid's three months at home. You guys don't know how much we suffer. So the park gonna save us, and I would love to thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna apologize to you guys, but I'm gonna step out for a minute just to be quiet.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
We wanted to bring the item forward, okay?
Thank you so much.
I want Jude. My turn.
Okay, say bye-bye, everyone.
Bye-bye. Jude, go ahead. Hi, my name is Jude. Today, I'm watching the wheels on the bus, and my favorite song on my new phone yesterday, I played the wheels on the bus go round and round all through the town.
Thank you. Mona? Mona, did you want to speak? Yeah, whoever else from, would like to speak on item 31, as we're gonna go back to the regular council agenda, so we're finished. Step four, just state your name.
My name is Mona Alloway. This is a friend of mine, Taha. Taha, say hi. If you want to come up and see with us. So Taha is very excited, and so is his mother, about the new parks, especially that they're all inclusive. So we can't thank you enough on behalf of the Blue Hands United team and all our Dearborn residents. We're very excited for the new parks. We're thankful that you guys are making all residents a priority. So I'm just speaking on behalf of all the parents. We're just really excited and happy, right, Taha? Thumbs up.
All right. Does anyone else from the audience like to speak on specifically this item, 31? Yes, sir. Step four, just state your name.
Good evening. I'm Chris Deller. That's my son, James, there. I just want to say how grateful I am to, to see this moving forward. Ali Bazey, he invited us here today to talk to you guys, and we're, and we got to meet Kamal here, and he was very kind and generous to James. I just wanted to say that it's very exciting, this is, very happy to hear this going forward, and that you guys are giving an opportunity for kids that are special needs or, you know, wheelchair accessible. And I'm very thankful for what you guys are doing, and the mayor, for everything that he's done to push this forward. Just a couple of things, we're Christians, and so I was gonna go, I was very impressed with the invocation. I've been here for 43, I've been here for 43 years, 43-year Dearborn resident, and I've seen this on TV a lot, but I've never actually been to here. So this is, this is quite the experience, so thank you very much for that. Yeah. So King David, you know, you guys know King David, King Solomon, the prophets of old. They say, defend the poor, the fatherless, do justice to the afflicted and the needy, open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are unfortunate and defenseless. Administer justice for the afflicted and the needy. So I believe that you guys are doing that in this, in this good cause. And then, of course, Jesus, there was a, a great feast, a great banquet that he was invited to by a ruler. And Jesus said, under the, under the people at the, or unto the ruler, he says, when you invite people to the banquet, don't invite your friends or your brothers, or your relatives or rich neighbors, lest they also invite you in return, and you're repaid. But when you give a feast and invite the poor, the crippled, the lame, and the blind, and you will be blessed because they cannot repay you, and your reward will be repaid to you on the resurrection of the just. So how do we apply that today? You guys are, we're coming together with some monies that you, you were able to, to get, and we're gonna invite people to this place, and we're not just gonna invite the regular people, we're gonna invite everybody, included the people that especially need it and need the love. So I just wanted to say thank you, and you guys have a good evening.
Okay.
I'm supposed to follow that up? Those are great words.
Just your name for the record, Ali.
My name's Ali Bazey. I'm a Dearborn resident. I just want to take an opportunity to say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, allowing the families to speak tonight. I wish to open my, my comments with a personal story about my son. My son Rami here is five years old. He was born with an extremely rare condition called inversion duplication, deletion AP. To provide context, there's only 100 medically documented cases of this in the world, and he's the only known case in the state of Michigan. Among the medical complexities, the condition provides challenges. He has hypotonia, which causes low muscle tone and makes playing at typical playgrounds difficult for him. When Rami turned two, it became clear that we needed to relocate. We grew up in Dearborn, my wife and I, we had moved out of the city, and we said we need to come back to Dearborn. The decision was also rooted in the fact that Dearborn Special Education Program is one of the best, and they have constantly exceeded our expectations. Equally noteworthy is the exceptional quality of services here in the city of Dearborn. The warm embrace we received when we moved back was ideal for our family. It's a commitment to residents that, it's a commitment that the city has to residents that other cities need to emulate. Standing here today advocating for these new parks, I feel lucky. The two new parks represent more than just recreational spaces. They signify inclusivity, compassion, and progress. Their existence will not only benefit my son Rami, but will also provide solace and joy for countless other families in similar circumstances throughout our city. I wish to express my deepest appreciation for Councilman El-Swafi. Over the past few years, his unwavering advocacy for families and individuals with special needs is commendable. His dedication and tireless effort in championing this project has been nothing more than remarkable, nothing less than remarkable. Councilman El-Swafi's commitment to our cause has been instrumental, and on behalf of my family, the special needs community in Dearborn, and myself, I extend our heartfelt thanks for his unwavering support and receptive nature. Additionally, I'd like to thank and acknowledge Mayor Hamood and his administration. In the span of just under two years, Mayor Hamood has propelled the city of Dearborn forward in countless ways. Today, as we stand on the brink of a significant addition with these parks, the unwavering commitment of the mayor and his team to the creation of these new parks stands as a testament to their dedication to serve all residents in Dearborn. Their inclusion on special, their inclusion of the special needs community and the decision-making process exemplifies their commitment to equality and accessibility for all. In conclusion, I urge you to consider the immense impact that these parks can have. Many residents with special needs have said to me they feel like they are invisible citizens. These parks will help them feel seen. They are not just spaces for play, they are a symbol of inclusion, acceptance, and progress. I implore you to vote in favor of this, of these parks, and usher in a new era of accessibility and unity within the city of Dearborn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Any other person on this specific item only, so we can return to our meeting? All right. I'd like to thank all the participants for coming forward on this, and I think council as well as administration has been in full support, so we are very pleased, and we thank you for your comments. There is, there is a lot that, that we do do here that does make a difference, and we try every day, so we do appreciate that. At this time hearing and seeing no objection, a unanimous rule will be attached. Mr. Clerk, shall be attached.
Thank you. We can move back now to public comment, which we have 14 minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we are now going to return back to our regular scheduled council meeting. For those that were here for that specific item, if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. If not, you, you can go ahead, just try to do it as quietly as possible. Now, I know we were in the middle of the public comment portion, so I wanted to thank those that were here, especially at the podium, for us to adjourn or delay or break the meeting so that we can try to make it as orderly as possible. So Mr. Joseph LeBlanc, right? Would like to have you back up again. I apologize again, but I'm sure you understand.
No need to apologize.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, and I apologize, go ahead.
So, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council clerk, thank you. I just want to repeat what Ms. Turner said. I'd like to talk about short-term rentals. I was here a year ago talking about the same issue. I sent you all a letter, I think, if you got it, and it was rather long, but it was outlining just one month of the nonsense that goes on at the neighborhood, in, at the Airbnb in my neighborhood, is directly next to my house. It's, this has been a year, there's been constant calls to the city for ordinance violations, and they have been very responsive. I'm on a first-name basis with the ordinance officer, which shouldn't be, but he's been very responsive. The police department's been very good, our neighborhood police officer has been helpful. But the problems still exist. Just, and just very briefly, probably about a month or two ago, we had 40 people in this house three nights in a row holding some kind of event. They weren't making noise or anything, but this is not an event center in the middle of a neighborhood. These houses are close together, they're 40-foot lots, so this went on three nights in a row. No need for me to call the police, they're not making any noise, other than 20 cars blocking traffic and in and out. Next morning, I get up, though, I'm picking up beer bottles, paper plates, foodstuffs, trash, so I won't go on with all the things. But I'd just like you to know also, and I consented to you, New York City had a big problem with Airbnbs. They've passed an ordinance. It's pretty much brought, brought Airbnbs to a halt within New York City. And I know that there has, I've talked with Mr. Towery, and I know there's been an ordinance that's been working out, so I would ask that, you know, that, please keep moving on that, take a look at it. Where I live, there are at least eight, probably eight, and even more hotels within a mile or in a mile, mile and a half of my neighborhood. No need to have an Airbnb and others literally operating as full-time, and this is a full-time hotel in a neighborhood, near schools, in residential, single-family residential areas. So I'd ask whatever you can do to move that along, I would certainly appreciate it, and I'm sure others in the city have the same issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Can we have our commander up for a minute? So before, I think the speaker before Ms. Turner was up, I did make some notes that I wanted to address with the police so we could get some information back. And our council executive does have short-term rentals, as was indicated before, I think in your speech, ma'am, regarding that they are, were, they were proposed, or there was a bill proposed in the state. That was something that did come to the council, and we did look at it. So we do have a list of study sessions that we're working on, and Jackie, you do have that down for short-term rentals. But some of the things that you said, I wanted to make sure that they are addressed because that's immaterial to having ordinance or not. So we have our commander, Lizansky, here. If you can, I just want you to try to, is that right?
Zalanski.
Zalansky, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Good Polish name.
Good name. Animal Control is under your jurisdiction, so I'd like, when you have a chance, if we could get her address where that was called, because for me, the indication was there was no response. So that's not acceptable. Can you hear me, ma'am? Okay, so I'm gonna have the commander get the information, and the commander, if you could just report back to the council if you have any run calls or log where there was no response. You know, the taxes that we pay in Dearborn and what we expect in Dearborn is not that you call the animal control and there's no response. So that's unacceptable, and I want to get to the bottom of that. There is run logs, so I'm sure the commander will be able to get that for us, too. But for people that are having this issue, all I can say for myself and my colleagues, we are going to look into this, it is calendared, but I want everyone to understand, too, just like the internet, just like anything that comes along, this Airbnb craze has exploded, and there is a lot of legal issues that we have to address on what we can and what cannot do. I'll make it very clear to you as my stance, I have a single-family home, I believe a residential home area is a residential home area. I know that most of the residents that spoke have been here many, many years, and know that Dearborn has a very aggressive rental program, which means we don't just, we monitor rentals, we have a three-year interval inspections to make sure they're kept up, and we had a last count over 4,000, 4,000, excuse me, registered rentals. So I know that this is something that needs to be addressed, and we're not taking it lightly. But commander, if you don't mind, if you could get that information just to see, and then just report back to the council.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have Mr. John Benzek.
I'm John Benzek, 2211 Academy Avenue, here in the great city of Dearborn, Michigan. I'm here to represent the veterans, and I want to go through the chair and the seven of you, and I greatly appreciate the resolution that you passed in the last meeting. I know how hard it is to have a discussion, what's going on in the Arabic-Jewish war over there, and certainly it has been a big discussion with us veterans. I can give you a response to us veterans about how we feel about the situation. The biggest problem we have right now is a situation that took care, took care, took place in Afghanistan, and the way we handled it. The second thing, that's a big problem with the veterans, that 50% of them don't even want to discuss the subject matter whatsoever. The third thing that's been on the agenda is, I spend a lot of time with the parents. We just got done with the football game over here at the American Legion, and the parents want to know why their next of kin, their sons or their daughters, don't want to talk about anything about the Middle East War and their reactions to it. So I spend a lot of time explaining to them what they went to, what has happened, and for them to get relationship to their, to their sons and their daughters, and they're so happy and pleased that somebody understands everything, what's going on. Well, that was my training when I went overseas. I was stationed out of Saigon with MACV, and Chief Freelove, with the, with the Pueblo and the Ten Offensives, and he carried a secret, type-secret clearance, special operations and team leader of three. We couldn't have any military officers out in the field where I was at because we were all executed, shot and killed, I'll be honest with you. And that went on for month after month after month. I, I, I was cleaning out my garage, and this is in the Detroit Free Press on September the 16th, peace draws in the Middle East. This is with Sadat, Begin, I believe, he was the prime minister of Israel at the time.
Give 30 seconds.
And both were killed afterwards. One was at a ceremony, he was literally blown up. Now, there's talk is that they want to review everything in 1967, what took place. Well, 1967, what took place, we had the Detroit riots go on at the same time as everything blew up in the Middle East. We veterans do not support all the tragedy that has taken place with the Jewish government, Hamas, or the Authority. We don't, we consider them as a criminal organization, and, and, and all three of them as terrorist organizations.
Sorry, your time has expired?
We don't want to see any human physical involvement. Now, I do know the military is active in the Middle East, we support their aspect of it, we support the parents, and we're going to do everything humanly possible to move everything forward. I just want to thank the seven of you and the, and the mayor that you had time enough to have a discussion, to pass a resolution, and I thought you did an outstanding job in handling the subject matter. Continue on. I know from the chair, I know from the chair, I know this is not related directly to city council business, but we have six Arabic cultural groups living in the city of Dearborn, and 40% don't want to even be identified with the Muslim religion whatsoever, and I know why. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benzek. All right, next we have Ted Barham.
I also want to comment on the resolution in the last city council meeting for a Gaza ceasefire. Thank you for wanting to bring this war to an end, this devastating war. I lived in Palestine and Israel for a few months this year, and I know people on all sides who have lost friends and family. Muslim people, who of course have lost more than anybody else, and so many children. Jewish people, and my fellow Christians as well. I'm also concerned, though, about antisemitism in Dearborn social media. There are a few people, some men and women, who have even supported and encouraged the rape of Israeli young women. And I tried to push back a little bit on this in social media. I got banned again. So, you know, I think the world owes a lot to Jewish people and Israel historically. My favorite Jewish person, who was born in Bethlehem, which is now Palestine, said something we all need to hear right now. Love your enemies. And he did love his enemies, even though they killed him. I just want to let you know about some dear friends of mine. They're like family, very close friends, who live right next to Dearborn, and their flag, their Israeli flag, has been vandalized multiple times. Somebody shot a BB gun through their window. It broke the window. They feel very intimidated, and so actually, I just have something specifically to request of the Honorable Mayor, who I recall has said in the past that you stand against hate and bigotry in all its forms, and whatever you think on Israel, could I ask you if you might kindly?
Do you have thirty seconds?
Speak up for, and help to protect these dear Jewish friends of mine. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barham. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Mr. Ali Fadallah.
Can I just comment real quickly, Council President?
Mayor, would you like to respond? Yes.
Yeah, I, I think.
One second, Mr. Fadallah.
Thank you for coming. I think the point that I make is any and every resident in the city of Dearborn should feel safe in their home, regardless if you have a difference of political opinions or any type of opinion. And so, if there is an incident, I would ask you to connect with our commander to ensure that it was reported appropriately, so that they can do the thorough investigation to ensure that anybody that commits a crime is brought forward. Every single individual across the whole city should feel safe regardless of their race, ethnicity, the direction that they pray.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ali Fadallah?
Yes, sir. I really came here today.
Sir, just your name again for the record.
My name is Ali Fadallah. I've been a lifetime Dearborn resident, and I just really came here today to express my thank you to my hometown. I've been here all my life, and I've had disabilities all my life, and I've been in your schools all my life, and this is going back to O'Reilly, Guido, and I think I received the best education with a man of many, many disabilities. And I'm here to thank you all for all that wonderful education. I got a lot of disabilities, and I want to be optimal. I'm not optimal, but I know there's something that can cure that, and I'm here to like, you know, say that I believe I'm a player in a political game, in an entertainment game, and I just hope that, you know, I receive that holistic treatment that can make me optimal. And I'm here to express that to you, too. And that's all I have to say today.
Thank you, Mr. Fadallah. Thank you very much. All right. So, at this time, we have concluded our first public comment of thirty minutes, and we will now conclude and move to our regular council agenda. And just to remember again, reminder, there is public comment at the end of the meeting as well. Mr. Fard, can we have the first item of business?
Next is item number six, resolution in need of offer and support approving all the consent agenda items and requesting immediate effect.
Right. Offered by Councilman Al-Suwafi and supported by Councilwoman Herrick.
Council President.
Before, yes.
If I could, we're talking about the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was going to ask if there's.
Yes.
So, yeah, let me ask it, and then you can introduce, okay? Before we move to the consent, move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that any members wish to remove from the consent agenda to discuss individually? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to have item number nine on the agenda for a discussion during the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, item number nine shall be removed from the consent agenda in place on the regular council agenda. Okay. Councilman Al-Suwafi, do you have any objection to that?
No objection.
Councilwoman Herrick, do you have any objection?
No objection.
All right. So, Mr. Clerk, we have offered support as stated, removing number nine. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Suwafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the first, next item of business?
The next item, then, will be item number nine.
Yes.
Resolution by Councilmember Hamud and Enos, authorizing the Finance Administrator to process the additional four new full-time titles of Water and Sewer Operations Administrator, Public Service Administrator, City Infrastructure Administrator, and Public Buildings Administrator, each at grade fifty-one, with a starting salary of eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars to the E&amp;A salary plan, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This request is to authorize an increase in the current budget staffing levels in the Public Works Department for four full-time titles. These four, these four are Water and Sewer Operations Administrator, Public Service Administrator, City Infrastructure Administrator, and Public Buildings Administrator. These four new titles are responsible, are responsible for managing new, new workforce development programs beyond training, coaching, and providing guidance to the DPW Department staff. The incumbents will oversee full and part-time personnel, ensuring program compliance with laws and regulations on grant funding as well. These positions are charged, charged with establishing, designing, implementing, the managing workforce development initiatives and partnerships. Serving as the City Advisor on Workforce Development, the four incumbents also assume the Division Lead for Workforce Development Initiatives within the Public, Department of Public Works. The four positions will be internally posted for the department, and immediate effect is being requested. This is Mr. Director Hawkins? If you'd like to come forward on this. I know we spoke Thursday regarding it, but I think there's some more questions regarding it.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins, Director.
Tim Hawkins, Director of Public Works and Facilities.
Right. Mr. Hawkins, I'm going to have, I know Councilman Paris had some questions, but just for overview, so we can understand, my understanding, just the title changes, are these increase in funding? Can you just give us a broad overview? Is it increase in funding or just title changes?
These are just title changes. We are using current FTEs, and we are not filling positions that they replace.
All right. So, I just wanted to make sure for our residents and for my colleagues, because we discussed this Thursday, these are budget-approved already by the council?
Yes.
Correct.
The FTEs are approved, yes.
And what you're, I'm sorry? Mayor, did you have something? Okay, Director. So, the funding for these positions are your prerogative that the council has granted to you. They were budgeted, and you're moving the, you're moving these to create these, these four new titles. Is that correct?
Correct.
And they've been approved by the Civil Service Commission?
Yes.
Okay. So, Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. And Director Hawkins, I appreciate yourself and your deputy that spoke at the Committee of the Whole. I just had some follow-up questions because I am still, I got to admit, a little bit confused about this and have some questions. It's my understanding, number one, that we were supposed to receive, and I believe it would be from civil service or what was supplied to civil service, about the actual description of the duties and responsibilities of those four positions that we have not received. Just in our backup material, just the description that's there in the executive summary, but it was a request that was made, and I believe by Councilman Hamud, to get those descriptions. So, it, it adds to some confusion or some further questions to me. The executive summary backup says that these four positions, and it was said on Thursday also at the Committee of the Whole, that the new titles responsible for managing new workplace development programs, and the DPW executive summary via the mayor to the council says four new titles are, in quote, "four new positions" in the second paragraph. So, I had some confusion on Thursday, and I brought it up, and I believe your Deputy Director made mention that they are not four new positions, that they are just new classifications for describing what the work is to be done by those four proposed administrators in the future. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I apologize about any clerical errors. You know, I write a lot of these memos, so.
No, no, I get it.
If that was a mistake, it's on me. But the truth of this is, is to get a classification that will help us, the Deputy Director and myself, oversee DPW in a whole. We're two-hundred-and-thirty-four employees or something, give or take, around there, and we run eleven divisions throughout the city, and these four positions will help us consolidate what we do in these divisions towards each other. We have similar functions going on in many of the different divisions that we don't physically see ourselves, right? It's quite a bit to just oversee, and the four positions are here to help us see the similarities between these divisions, to help us guide in one direction in training and the education and requirements in different divisions, such as water and sewer, right? Two separate divisions, yet they hold a lot of similarities. How do they train? How do they function? What do they move forward? So, one of these titles is going to look at both of those, to sit with all of them in their training, in their legal requirements, in their licensure, and see where there's similarities. So, when we have that main break at two in the morning, maybe I can get some sewer employees to come over and help turn the water back on at your house. It's more than I can do as a director or my deputy can do, and these positions are really about knowing who we are after two years and knowing what we need to move this forward. So, that's why we created them. That's why we're asking for them. That's what we're looking for.
My further question to that, though, and help me understand this, it was stated Thursday, and I believe we'll discuss that again tonight, that these four administrative positions, you were hoping to have them filled by internal posting of these positions and having qualified individuals assume those roles administratively. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're hoping internal candidates. We have some very smart, bright individuals that work for Department of Public Works that are underutilized, and I think, no matter where they're at in any position, whether you're in the Clean Streets Program and on your second day, or a thirty-year member of the Water and Sewer Department, you know, they deserve a shot at helping us reorganize this department.
In fact, I need a little bit more context as well.
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
The reason this had to go through civil service, I can't just take an internal managerial candidate, for example, who's doing a phenomenal job in one subdivision, and promote them now to take over two subdivisions. The union contracts won't permit you. You actually have to ensure that the classification that's created allows for that individual to take on a role that's more expansive than just one subdivision. And so, we had to create these four positions in order for us to have some command at the top that can help oversee multiple subdivisions within, by, by one individual. And so, we, these are promotional opportunities, obviously, from within. I think it gets folks also to another carrot and a target to look at. You obviously always want to promote within, especially from a large department. But more than anything, you have to get it appropriate within the contract, within civil service, in order for those roles and responsibilities to be legal, and that they have the capacity and the ability to take on additional roles and responsibilities. Currently, to date, we don't have those positions.
Okay. That, that brings up two different thoughts or questions that I would have, then. If you plan on doing this internally, or hopefully this happens internally, what happens to those people that would move up, then? What happens to their roles and responsibilities? You know, that they are responsible for the day-to-day, whatever jobs that they had? If just not going to fill them, who's going to fulfill those responsibilities?
We're, we're going to have to see which positions are removed. If it was a managerial position, they may have to carry that duty forward. That could be part of why they are paid a higher salary than the subsequent position they're moving from. Secondarily, we'll have to see what the impact is. If these positions work correctly, maybe they're a position eliminate because it was unnecessary. So, that will come from who we hire, when we hire, and what's actually reviewed. But that's why there's no reason to backfill them in such a, I hate to use the word reorganization, but an internal review.
Okay. And I recall that it being said on Thursday, then, too, that there are the, there is the potential of reaching out to other individuals that are not employed with the city, that have a vast amount of experience in their field that you might be interested in looking at.
I think what I don't want to do is get into like how the hiring actually happens. I think that's beyond the council's purview. I think for us, we'll follow the civil service process and HR as they lay it out legally, and I don't want to discuss like, do I have a person in mind that I'm trying to bring in? That's not what we're trying to do.
Wasn't going to get into the.
Yeah, I know. I just want to make sure that we stay on topic.
Mayor, thank you. Also, Director, just to piggyback on that, if there was any backfilling, you would, I'm assuming you have no more budget for that, you'd have to come forward regardless. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm filling current FTEs. If I needed more FTEs than what I currently budgeted for, I would have to come back to come forward.
So, it would come back in front of us at that point, and then we could then.
Correct.
Look at it at that point. Councilman Paris, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, and I'm just trying to understand why this has been described, then, as budget-neutral, you know?
It's budget-neutral because there's no request for funds? Is there a request for funds?
No, there is not.
So, I, what's happening is the council has prerogative to allow, we gave, we delegated, Director Kennedy, would you like to come forward so we can give us a lesson on why I have your feedback on this regarding budgeting?
This complies with the Serini rule?
No. Let's, let's get this done so we can move on.
Good evening, Michael Kennedy, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. So, can you just give us a small, your understanding of how a department head has been granted through the budget process and through the council process to allow them to move positions and use their funding, like we do in our council office?
Sure. The budgets are adopted at the department level, and the director has the full authority to reallocate that as they see fit to get the job done that they need to be done. There is another internal control that was mentioned, the FTE, the position count, and that's what we oversee in the Finance Department as step one before anyone's hired, and then step two goes to the administration mayoral approval also.
Right. And just for my colleagues, so that we're on the same page, if the council chooses to line item a department or indicate these are funds only for this position, we have that authority. We did not do that. For example, in the council office, we had a budgeted intern that we did not need to fill at this time. That funding was available to allow us to do other things. That's normal course of business, but that was granted by the council. If the council feels that they don't want to do that, we have the full authority during our budget hearings not to do that. But I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in that if that's why it's budget-neutral, is that correct? Because there's not a request for any additional funding?
Yes, because there's sufficient budget to cover what they're requesting.
Okay. Councilman Paris? Okay. Thank you, Director Kennedy. Councilman Hamud?
So, on this item, wasn't going to say anything, but since we're talking about it, I'm very disappointed that we didn't get the job descriptions that I requested on Thursday, because we did have an at-length discussion about this, and I had some reservations as far as where we were going with designating these titles, especially since it's literally just a title change. These titles are not necessarily common in industry, but upon further explanation, I did understand why you had to do it based on the current structure of the department. So, and if this general job description, I don't even have the piece of paper in front of me, so I can't even ask you a good question, but the City Infrastructure Administrator, if it's what I think it is, the salary is also woefully inadequate for a position such as that, so if you find someone to fill that, you'll be lucky. And in addition, I think the, the reason why I'm not going to pull my support from this item, however, is because I do believe that you guys are doing a study to figure out how to reorganize DPW, and you, as a director, have delivered generally on your promises that you've made to us as a council, and you've been doing good work broadly. So, I, but I will say, I do very much want these job descriptions for positions that we're authorizing at, in high levels of the DPW department, so I look forward to seeing those as soon as possible.
I apologize about not delivering them, and I will deliver them tomorrow morning to all of council.
Yeah, and I mean, anything that we do, we can undo, which is, I think, what Council President Serini likes to say, so.
Absolutely.
If we have a problem with them, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director. Any other questions or comments on item number nine? Okay, do you like a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, can we, you do have an offer and support from the carry forward, correct?
Yes.
And just for the record, who is the offer and support?
Hamud and Enos.
Okay. Remain your offer and your support? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos, yes. Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Asawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Six days, the resolution passes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
We're going to move to item number 22, resolution by councilmembers Perez and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting on November 14th, 2023.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and see in un, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item, please.
Item 23, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of November 14th, 2023.
Okay, any deletions, modifications, or additions to these minutes? Okay, hearing see in un, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item, clerk.
Item 24, ordinance number 23-1804, introduced by councilmember Asawafi, synopsis and ordinance to amend the building and building regulations, chapter, chapter five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 12, sections 5-133, 5-1335, 5-1336, 5-1339, and 5-1340, entitled Signs.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The proposed amendments to the city sign ordinance, which has been adopted in July 2018, are being made to come forward with recent federal court decisions regarding content-based regulation for signs. The changes also encompass input received by the council. I had three study sessions that were held on December 14th of '22, March 22nd of '23, and again, October 4th of '23 to discuss the amendments. The proposed revisions help streamline the city's regulatory approach to signs. Proposed revisions include modifications of definitions, removal of some permit requirements, increase in the number of temporary signs, removal of content-based regulations, removal of regulations on vehicle signs, and reductions in penalties. This is the first of two readings. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Councilman Hamud?
Just a quick comment. The script, the item in our backup, it's not the most updated copy we received in our email, so I hope the clerk makes sure to look for the new copy that we modified at the Cal.
So the one that, Councilman, just so I can be understood, I know that the Cal wasn't correct, so we did receive an email, but it's not in this ballot?
Correct.
All right, Jackie, can you make a note of that? Mr. Clerk, thank you, Councilman.
That's it.
Okay. Any other on this one? Okay, okay. Well, we'll get it, yeah. So let's stay on this item. So we're, on this item, we will receive, we did receive via email, but we make sure we'll be in the backup. Jackie, thank you. Any other questions or comments on first reading? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-1804, an ordinance to amend the building and building regulations, chapter, chapter five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 12, section 5-1333, 5-1335, 5-1336, 5-1339, and 5-1340, entitled Signs, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Herrick to table the ordinance.
Okay, and a unanimous rule would be attached to table the ordinance. Is there any, hearing any objections? Hearing's none, so is attached. Next item.
Item 25, ordinance number 23-1805, introduced by councilmember Hamud, synopsis and ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations, chapter, chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 7A, entitled Food Trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The food trucks in the city are currently primarily regulated under chapter 12, article B11A of the Code of Ordinances, food truck ordinance. The ordinance sets a minimum standards for licensing but does not currently address where in the city food trucks may operate. The proposed amendments would regulate, among other things, where a city food truck may operate and, I'm sorry, and are modeled after similar regulations in Grand Rapids and in the city of Detroit. The following is a summary of substantial changes that are being proposed. The licenses must be, must be signed, a statement holding in the city and its employees, holding the city and the employees harmless on any claims related to property damage that may occur as a result of operation of a food truck. The requirement of liability insurance is to be increased to $1 million per occurrence and naming the city as additional insurer. Addition to, addition to inspection and compliance of with generation, generator noise at decibel levels that shall not exceed a maximum of 80 decibels measured from 15 feet distance and require that the vehicle exhaust be directed away from the service side of the vehicle. Also that they will, we will accept, language will change that with proof of inspection by Western Wayne County Fire Mutual Aid Association for compliance with fire safety, generation, generator noise level and exhaust direction requirements subject to verification by our fire marshal. Next, we have for events with 10 or more, we changed that to six, is that correct? In the Cal?
We want it to two.
Is that, Mayor, how do you?
We haven't, it's not in the modifications either, so we have to motion it.
This is regarding larger events. Originally it was four, I have six. Councilman Hamud says two.
I think the goal was to get two or, two or more.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk and Jackie, can we make, make sure that's amended to two or more food trucks that the event organizer may apply for a food truck license on behalf of the participant in food trucks, subject to the other requirements for licensing under this ordinance. Expirational licenses on April 30th to align with the annual inspection of the state issue license is another change. Requirement that waste originating from the food truck and not, not from the customer shall be collected and deposited off-site by the food truck operator and prohibiting of dumping of gray water, grease, or other food waste into the public property, including drains and public trash cans. Prohibition on loud music and amplified noise, power required for the food truck to be self-contained and self-provided unless otherwise authorized by a building official. Also, food trucks may also operate, operate as designated locations within operations for daily passes, weekly and weekend passes, monthly passes, and seasonal passes. Enforcement by Economic Development, Police Department, and the Clerk's Office. This is the first of two readings. We had a lot of stuff, I'm sorry, discussion regarding this on the committee of the whole. This is the first reading, and we do have some modifications as well. Councilman Hamud?
So I guess just to kick this off a little bit, I think people are aware by now, we've had some conversations about food trucks now for over a year, and I think we're, we're busy still trying to thread the needle on where do we balance out community needs to, you know, live peacefully in their home and not have nuisances while also allowing entrepreneurs to be able to practice their craft and provide to the vibrant food scene that we have here in Dearborn. This is just a first step in, in that process, so we want to enhance the licensing process. And actually, there are some streamlined aspects while also allowing our ECD department and our ordinance division to ensure that we can clamp down on, on bad actors who may be polluting or, you know, providing unnecessarily, unnecessary noise and nuisances like that to neighboring businesses and homeowners. So this, like I said, is just a companion piece. We are going to additionally be discussing placement as part of a future zoning discussion. So I think a lot of the conversations that we've been having, I think a lot of, especially food truck owners, want to comply with our new nuisance regulations. I think they, they want to be good neighbors and they, and they want to contribute positively to the, to the fabric of our city. So I think helping to clarify some of those requirements is, is helpful to them because they're business owners, they just want to abide by the law. And I think it's helpful to even people who are nearby so that we can continue to receive feedback on what kind of things they want to see. We still do have some work to do on this, and kind of to that end, I think the, the way that we have it structured now, in, in terms of restricting the location, I think without providing guidance already to people as to where the locations are going to be, you know, it's, it's unnecessary, it's unnecessary and a little bit unreasonable at this time to, to put in that portion into this ordinance. So there are a couple of modifications. I'm going to motion if council allows me, the chair, so we can try to, A, smooth, smooth this part out, because I think there's a lot of excellent work done here by the legal department and the ECD department to, to clamp down on issues that we know we're already having. And I think the location restriction, we can discuss a little bit more later date, you know, but I think everybody's pretty much on notice the direction that we're headed, so I don't know.
So Councilman, are you, are you asking me, because right now we have an offer by Councilman Enos and a support by Councilwoman Herrick. We can ask them to modify or you can make a separate motion. What's the modification?
So I think the, one, one modification we already discussed, which is the two or more trucks. So we, we kind of discussed that on the Cal, and it's just not in the backup.
Let's take one at a time. Councilman, I'm going to give you the floor, don't worry. Councilman Enos?
I'm good with that.
Are you good with the two or more?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herrick, are you good with the two more?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that shall be modified, it could be voted on as that. So we'll clear that one. Clerk, you have that?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Hamud?
So additionally, it's not in the piece of paper in front of us, it's in the emailed copy. Under 1250, section 12, 255, subsection A, and then subsection 1. Here, it's, it says hours of operation, but really there's a, there's a portion that reads, "Food trucks licensed under this article shall be permitted to operate only in city-owned public parks and park properties as designated by this article or as otherwise specifically authorized under the Code of Ordinances and zoning ordinance." So as part of that sentence, I just want to strike the word "only" out of this so that it makes it more clear that you can operate in city-owned public parks and park properties or the, you know, as otherwise specifically authorized by the Code of Ordinances to allow for, to, when the ordinance enforcement goes out there, to make it pretty clear that there's two sections you can fall under, which is either the zoning, because you have a allowable zoning, or you're operating in a park under the auspices of the rest of the ordinance that we're discussing, so.
Okay. Councilman Hamud, that is 12 dash, what was it, 255?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not in the piece of paper that's in front of us.
Okay, just give us the code number.
Yeah, 12, 255, subsection A, subsection 1.
Okay, 12, 255, subsection A1. What I have in the paper, is it, is it a totally different number in the, in the hard copy?
Yeah, it's not even in the hard copy.
Okay. So I think this is a, a good change because what we were concerned on the committee of the whole is how we, which I think my colleagues agreed, I for one never liked to piecemeal anything. But we were saying that this might, we had to bring something forward and to go forward, but location is, is a concern, and that's, I think, the genesis of the entire aspect of it. So I do agree with the removal. By removing that, we don't, we can get this project going down the road. Is that correct, how you interpret it, Councilman Hamud?
That's one aspect.
Without limiting or making it illegal at the moment that it has passed.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to make another motion to divide it out as a section, but I just wanted to change the wording as it is anyway.
On this one?
Yeah, this is more of a enforcement issue, you know, like the clear writing that you talk about?
Correct.
Yeah, you're, you inspired me on that one.
Oh, that's good, I'm glad. Councilman Enos?
I'm good with it.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herrick?
Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Clerk, will you make the amendment to remove, strike the word "only," so that then it'll be permitted in the parks and not only in the parks, so the word "only" shall be permitted? And Jackie, just make a note on that for the, Councilman Hamud, you have another?
And then the last motion is just to divide the question where.
We're not making, just, I'm sorry, one second, Councilman. Mr. Romer, we're not actually making a motion because the offer and support are agreeing to the change. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, but he's making the motion to divide out a certain section, as I understand, which as long as it stands alone, he can make that motion, which if it is, he's going to have to identify the section so I can answer whether it can stand.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I'm going to give him the, the leeway on that to go forward. I just want to make sure the last two, we were correct on the, on the process regarding?
You were, you were correct, Councilman.
All right, so Councilman Hamud, this one, you actually wanted to make a motion. So do you want to go ahead and state?
Yeah, so this one we'd have to vote on, which is, I just want to divide the question for, for the subsection that, again, I'm sorry, is not necessarily in front of you, but I can read it out loud.
It was an email, yeah.
Yeah. Subsection A, subsection 1.
Well, state the section first.
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, section 12-255, subsection A, and then subsection 1, which is entitled, well, the subsection A is rules, guidelines, and restrictions, and then the title for subsection 1 is food trucks licensed under this article shall be permitted to operate only in public parks and park properties. So initially, we had a, we had a modification where we were going to just delay the implementation to a certain date.
That is correct. We had a date, I believe, May?
Actually, in here, it says September 2nd.
September 2nd.
Yeah.
Mayor, did I understand?
No, no, we're going to modify it just to give a little bit more time.
Okay. Yeah, so, so instead of, instead of passing something and then waiting, I think let's just table, my goal is, we want to divide it, and then I'm, I'm just going to say my intent, divide it and then table it, and then when, when we start to move forward with the zoning aspect, we'll bring it back from the table and we'll pass it along with the.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it at all. Originally, for me, for September, that was not in the, was that in the backup? Because my, they specifically said May.
It's online, it's not in the backup.
Yeah, okay, because, because I don't want to pass anything that takes effect that far in advance, for sure, myself.
Yeah, and we might even strip that and change the date again. I mean, we can modify when we get there.
I know, but as of right now, your modification, so for that, I'm sorry?
So to the Council, Councilman Hamud's point, by just taking out the location part of the parks, everything moves forward, we'll just deal with location, we're bringing forward the zoning ordinance in February or March.
Yeah.
Correct, but you're also asking to sever the question.
Just, just the aspect on location regulations, so that you can still go, you can still do the parks aspect and everything else that's in the current ordinance, and you, you just don't have to put the restriction on until we flesh out what the permitted uses and things like that are.
No, I understand, but, Mr. Romer, do you, do you have that as a coherent motion?
Yeah, so as I understand, section 12-255, subsection A, subsection 1, subsection I will be motion to be divided.
No, all, the whole one.
One I.
The one and one I, together, all together, the whole section. So everything's starting from the word "food trucks licensed under this article" to the end where it says "the city's Code of Ordinances and zoning ordinance."
So just A1 is what you're severing?
Yes.
But there's a parenthetical under A1?
Yeah, the whole, well, including the parenthetical.
Not a parenthetical, but a subsection.
Yeah, the, including the subsection, so the whole thing.
So A1 and subsection I?
Yes.
Yes, you can sever that question, or divide that question.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, one second. Councilman, Councilman Abraham?
If I could, I don't mean to interrupt, but just as a point of clarification, I guess for legal counsel, I guess I'm confused by the heading of section 12.255 as it ends in private property restricted. Is 12.255 specifically talking about operating on private property because the, the revisions to that section that we received yesterday or Friday are now talking about public property?
This is all property.
So when you say that you can only operate at parks, you're restricting on private. Does that make sense? I think that's what Councilman Hamud is getting to earlier, about getting the word rid of no. If I say you can only operate in a park, you can't operate on private property.
I guess I'm just talking about the title. Why is it private property restricted specifically addressed in the title?
My understanding is the title is what you guys decided on at the prior meetings. I, I don't.
I guess that's just confusing to me, because to me, that means this section is about operating on private property.
We can amend the title.
Yeah, if you want us to make that more clear.
It's up to my colleagues, I'm just.
Well, I think it's pulling the whole section out of the door in this instance.
Yeah, so we can strike that from the title if you'd like. It would make sense.
I think it would be, should be consistent. I'll leave it up to legal in the first reading. We can throw all these revisions out there and clean it up. We have a month to clean it up.
Okay.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, still, still the same motion to divide.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Abraham. So we're going to have a title change, and you still would like a motion to divide that question, sever it. Okay. Mr. Romer, is your understanding that it can stand on its own and be a proper motion?
That is correct.
Okay, so do we have a support? Support by Councilman Perez? Okay.
I, I still have a comment.
Okay, Councilman Abraham?
I guess if you're all in agreement to just strike it out, why, why do we have to sever, just strike it out?
I mean, I just wanted to keep it available to us as writing without having to go redo it later, but do you want to just strike out?
We're going to have to vote no on it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we can, we can just strike out the whole thing and then reuse the wording later.
Right, so let's, so, thank you, Councilman, that's, that's what I was asking you regarding if we could just amend it.
Because I still agree with the concept that, of it. I don't have a disagreement with the idea. I just don't want to talk about it today.
We're not going to delete it on our Word document.
Yeah, all right. I'm just doing it procedurally.
All right, so Councilman Hamud, you actually offered this?
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Herrick?
Introduced it, yeah.
Do you have an objection to just severing those, that portion out, completely deleting it?
So now we're going to do, instead of a, a motion to, to divide, we'll just do a motion to amend and to remove the whole thing.
Are you okay with that, Councilwoman Herrick?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Councilman Perez, are you okay to withdraw your support on that? And Councilman Hamud, you're drawing your support on the sever?
I'll change the motion.
You're good, Councilman Enos? Okay.
Can I just make a brief point?
Councilman, I'm sorry.
If I may?
Yes.
Because I'm, I'm starting to get confused, because he modified the section, he is now striking out entirely.
Yeah, I know. Well, I changed my mind, yeah.
So you're going, but that, so that motion is going to be withdrawn, and you're just going to strike the section. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's my understanding. Uh, Mr. Romer, do we need to take any other actions since we have offer and supporter also agree with that?
No, it can be treated as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Mr. Clerk? If we didn't get it, I know we have a recording, right, Jackie?
Yeah.
All right, we're good.
We get it.
All right, so any other questions from my colleagues before I open up to the, uh, Councilman Hamud? Uh, Councilman Alswafi, a pause there.
Can I just explain what happened to some of the people in the audience?
Yes, Council, yes, Mayor, absolutely.
Sorry, so so just so everybody's clear, um, so what Councilman Hamud suggested, you know, we have a second ordinance coming in February, March, talk about exactly where you can park. So what he did was just take the section where it says only parks are allowed out of this ordinance, so we can just deal with all that together in March. And then we'll bring it back in March to say now you can come to parks, and we'll talk about exactly where the private portion happens. But all the, you know, expediting of how you get your license, trying to expedite how we have events, um, and some of the safety rules, regulations will go into place immediately.
All right, um, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Alswafi.
Thank you, Council President. I know last time during the Committee of the Hall meeting, we discussed the process of food truck operators applying to use the food, uh, using the parks for the food trucks. We wanted to make sure that's a fair process, and the event that they're denied, we wanted to make sure that it comes to City Council. I see the amendment here, uh, in the, in the ordinance that was emailed to us, but in the section, I mean, the exact section, fifteen, B, two, three, I believe. And the last, and the last sentence says the decision of the director shall be final when it comes to the appeals process. And the intent during the Committee of the Hall to, was to make sure that the final decision should fall on the City Council.
Mr. Romer, my understanding is, uh, just to clarify, I'm sure you can clarify for us, my understanding is, uh, the decision, we're talking about an appeal process, maybe it's different than the decision itself. How do you, how can you, uh, understand that for us?
Uh, my understanding is this is the denial of using the park.
Correct.
And so that typically, since it's a recreational space that's controlled usually by the, the parks director, same with the performing arts and most types of that spaces, so we had the appeal moved directly to the recreation director. Uh, it's not uncommon that we have the appeal process end with a director. In this case, we we did it with the appropriate department that controls the space.
Right, I I think the council was, uh, though, Mr. Romer, I know you weren't here for the cow, but I think the council was adamant regarding the fact that we're gonna have, you know, millions of dollars in parks that we're doing, um, that's gonna have specific spots for spaces that we wanted to make sure that there, uh, someone would not be able to claim that they were unjustly, uh, denied. So we wanted that process to come through, uh, through the appeals, to be able to come through the council. So does any of my colleagues disagree with that?
For a minute, though?
Yeah, absolutely, but let me, Mayor, absolutely, we're gonna let you, absolutely, but I just wanna see if anybody on the council disagrees with that portion of that.
I just wanna provide some points about why it would be so bureaucratic to do that.
I understand, well, it's, we're talking about a denial, it's not bureaucratic, we're talking about a denial and a process.
Yeah, but the process would be pending upon a city council meeting. So if somebody was denied tomorrow to be at the park, they'd come to City Council mid-January to appeal the decision for the last four weeks, unless you're gonna hold a special council meeting just for the appeals. I think that's a very bureaucratic process as opposed to saying, let me take it to the director and appeal this administratively. I think most of the processes we have internally at the city, the appeals process typically goes to the administrative workforce and not before council on something as simple as, you know, I think I should be at the park on Tuesday and not, you know, this other burger truck, and it should be me, but the next council meeting is not for four and a half weeks.
Right, well, the council meeting, I understand, but as you indicated, the council sets its own agenda and can make an agenda. I think the concern is, is that this is relatively new and we're concerned about the process being, because it's gonna be so limited to make sure. So do my, if I have any comments for my colleagues?
I just think let's not approach with skepticism about the creation of a process before we create an appeal process that's so timely and taxing. If I told a food truck vendor, we'll hear your appeal in six weeks, that that to me seems to be just a little bit prolonged as opposed to saying.
Well, but Mayor, I know, but that's, I I think that, no, but I also think that's a, that's not a very, uh, good hypothetical. The council has the ability to call a meeting at any time by two members, a special meeting, according to the charter, so I think the concern is, there's been voiced concern on where the buck stops because it's gonna be so limited. You know, we haven't had any issues regarding this three-year administration. You know, I've been supportive from the, from the beginning, we haven't had any issues. I think the concern is that there's only four spots in a prime area.
Mm-hmm.
We're concerned on how the rotation, how it's gonna be handled, and don't want to leave it to one director. I don't think that's unreasonable. Remember, this is, once a denial, they have to go through a re, a process for them to appeal to the council, then the council can decide at that point. But again, I don't, my colleagues, how they feel regarding that, so I'd like to hear from my colleagues now. Anything from, hang on, hang on.
I'd like the appeal process to come to us.
Councilman Enos, you'd like the appeal process to come to us for denial of a spot?
Yeah.
And do I hear any objection on this side? All nodding heads? Halfway nodded, okay. So.
I'm happy.
Mayor, I, uh, Mr. Romer, do you have something to add?
I was just gonna ask for a clarification. Did you want it to go to the director and then council, or just eliminate the director level and go right to council?
No, I'd like to go to the, I think it should go to the director.
Okay.
The director has the autonomy, cuz the director's gonna be called to ask to put into writing what his rationale and reasoning for denial. He might send the denial to the council, and the council, I might, uh, Mayor, which I have the full, full authority to do, contact each of my members, have them review it independently without calling a meeting, and then say that we agree with the director and deny and deny the, uh, the petitioner a meeting to come forward. So I I think what we'd like to do is have the appeal process, uh, may be granted by the council, so it allows us the flexibility. If we ask the director on how he came, and he said he put three straws in a hat and pulled them, and that's what he did, and we're satisfied, then the council can then deny without having to call a meeting. Does anybody on the council disagree with that?
I didn't know council could deny without calling a meeting.
Well, we, it's an appeal, that's what I wanna ask, uh, Mr. Romer, we do have an obje, we do have an ability to deny a request for appeal like they do for an appeals court to the Supreme Court or to the Court of Appeals.
Yeah, yeah, but a denial would be a decision by the body that has to be made in an open meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure, I wanna make sure we're doing the right way, but we still need the director to be involved so that we get his opinion on what the aspects are and why they handle.
So just another clarifying question. Are you asking for the director to reel the appeal first? And then if the person's still not happy with the director's summary, then it comes to council in an open body meeting?
Absolutely. That, that, we are the final, we wanna be the final appeal, but the director shall, shall still make the decision, then the the final appeal can be, they may appeal to the council for further, like they do in in the zoning issue where the, they don't like the zoning ruling, their next step is, uh, the Wayne County Court. You have to have another stop in between. So I believe all my colleagues are in agreement with that. So, Mr. Romer, can you make that modification and send us that modification for us to look at as well?
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Just to clarify. Just to clarify for everybody in the audience, there was a lot of legal talk, but if you apply to be in a park and you're denied, and it goes to the director, and the director denies you, then you can come to council for a final decision.
Any other questions from my colleagues, for our, to the public? Okay, uh, from the public, if anybody'd like to speak regarding, uh, this first reading of, uh, the truck, food trucks, please step forward. Just state your name, uh, for the record, and I just kind of remind you, you have a three-minute limitation, and the court will keep the, uh, the timing and give you a thirty-second warning. So if anybody'd like to step forward? Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final, uh, for the first reading, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number two, three, dash, one, eight, zero, five, An Ordinance to Amend the Licenses and Business Regulations Chapter, Chapter twelve of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn, by amending Article seven A, entitled Food Trucks, Resolution by Councilmembers Enos and Herrick to table the ordinance.
Okay, and unanimous rule be attached, unless I hear any objections? Hearing none shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-six, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Alswafi, awarding a contract to Progressive AE in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for our housing market analysis.
Okay, the Dearborn Brownfield Redevelopment Authority approved a hundred thousand dollars to support housing market analysis to catalyze future brownfield redevelopment projects focusing on housing. This funding was included in the twenty twenty-four fiscal budget adopted by the council. Progressive AE was the sole qualified respondent to a competitive RFP, uh, issued, request for formal bid. After a due diligence effort, it was determined that the Progressive AE would achieve the goals of the RFP, which included a citywide analysis of the housing demand, absorption rate, the financial analysis, as well as a detailed modeling for various sites in the city that have amp, uh, ample, ample land, you know, for multiple, I'm sorry, for multiple housing projects. This analysis will generate public owned, will generate public, public, I'm sorry, publicly owned reliable data that will better quantify our demands for housing increasing, uh, uh, certainly for housing developers and landowners, and support the advancement of development projects that will, uh, bring needed housing to the city of Dearborn. This contract shall be charged to the Brownfield Development Authority for professional services. Account twenty, two, seven, five, dash, six, one, zero, zero, dash, four, thirty-five, dash, point, three, zero, hyphen, ninety, zero, project B, two, four, four, zero, Housing Analysis, Housing Market Analysis Fund. Uh, the contract shall be valid for a one-time purchase, and it will take approximately nine to ten months to complete. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes.
Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, just based on some, uh, comments that we had earlier tonight about our short-term rentals, it's bringing up to, we were, Council President, I believe you said about four thousand rentals within the city itself?
Registered rentals.
Not short-term, but the registered ones.
Yes.
Uh, my question would be then to the administration, this housing market analysis, would there be any way of including within that analysis to determine, uh, how many rentals that we believe that we have in the city? And let alone any short-term rentals?
Mayor?
So, um, we can speak with the vendor about that particular subset as it pertains to how many rentals we have in the city. That's more of a question of compliance with homeowners and landlords bringing that information forward. Short of this company surveying and knocking every house, I don't know how they'd gather that information. Even if you have a twelve percent rental rate, which is the four thousand on roughly thirty-one thousand residential homes, that'd be considered very strong for a city of our size. We think that's probably a little bit larger if you look at some of the duplexes, um, probably looking closer to twenty percent. But, uh, we can ask, I think, more than anything, the studies about what is the housing demand? That's what the study that we're asking them to conduct. What's the future housing demand depending on population growth, population migration, things of that nature.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing, seeing, and unanimous, the hearing and seeing, and unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-seven, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Enos, awarding a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options to cut my tree down and onesie tree service in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for tree removal services. Also authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate an allocation in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Green Initiatives and Flood Mitigation Project, ARPA eighty-five and the General Fund, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Department of Public Works, in conjunction with Purchasing Department, recommends a competitive award of tree removal services to both Cut My Tree Down and Wonsley Tree Service. DPW has fallen behind regarding the removal of dead, dying, and unsafe city-owned trees. DPW's, uh, current backlog is more than five hundred trees waiting for removal, with an estimated that there is additional five hundred dollars, uh, waiting to be tagged and removed as well. This contract will provide the city for two qualified contractors for, uh, routine tree services for the public service divisions throughout the year as needed. And the DPW will allocate the tree removal rotations to both vendors, having two vendors perform simultaneously. We'll expedite the removal of the trees to better meet the city's goals. The contracts will be for a one-year period with four one-year renewals at the same pricing and terms. This contract also provides, provides for several on-demand services should the city need assistance with clearing and removing store damage or pre-construction preparation for services related to the right-of-way repairs. The requested amount is seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, and immediate effect is being requested. Uh, Director Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward, I'd just like to bring some attention and and and, uh, on this.
Can I give some context as he walks up?
Yes, of course, Mayor.
So this came forward during COVID, there was a suspension of all tree removal services. And so what happened when we first came into office, we saw that the backlog of cutting trees was a little bit over five hundred trees and growing. And we only have the capacity to get between like six to ten per any given week, especially given the number of storms we've actually had, where you have fifty trees fall down at once. And so that tends to slow down the process. And so unfortunately, in this circumstance, we're bringing in two qualified contractors, put in the contract in half. Um, and Hawkins will speak to how that contract was originally designed, working with Mark and Purchasing. Um, but we're hoping to cut one thousand trees down by April. And so not only catch up on the backlog, but some additional trees that haven't been captured yet by our harvests.
Right, absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director, um, Hawkins, thank you for coming up. Um, I know that this, just for the residents for context, because I know that, um, we were concerned, as some of us were here, we have had contracts with tree companies where they basically just disappeared, correct?
Correct.
So I'm I'm hoping, I know we vetted these, and I know, uh, that was under the old administration where we had a vendor that just disappeared, so. Uh, my concern, um, I'm sure the performance will be measured. My bigger concern is the replanning of the trees. So can we talk about what that status is? And I know the council has a standing policy regarding construction. When construction is done, there's no, uh, there's an automatic replanting of one that was in the place. This is something different, though, cuz this is not, these are are easements where there's issues. So can you speak to, uh, what is the replanning process and what's the, how we're handling that?
Yes, um, so we're going out right now, currently tagging more wind damage, storm damage trees. As we said, we were currently five hundred behind. We are almost at the thousand marker now, uh, with tagging uh, on the trees that we've gone through the city, so it it will be extensive removal. But what I will say to the replanting is we are already putting together our, um, company that we purchased the, the tree samplings from, uh, setting this up so that we can talk to the residents, and communicate to them if they want a tree replanted in the current spot. We could do something along those lines. We were not planning on replanning one-for-one on every single lot, because some of these, uh, there's been road construction, narrowing of roads, roads went from sixteen-foot wide to twenty-two, twenty-five-foot wide throughout the decades that we've been here, and some of the easements have narrowed from a ten-foot easement down to a three- and four-foot easement. So based on what is currently there and what we remove, uh, we're gonna advocate for planting more trees, we're going to plant trees throughout the city, but we will not be replanning one-for-one.
Okay, then that's fair, but I would like a little bit more, you know, solid, like, on its policy-wise, so how are we gonna be determining this? So if an easement is four feet wide or three foot wide, are we gonna, I I wanna make sure that we're automatically notifying, cuz, as you know, I did a, a tree, uh, CDT HEV regarding the tree, because we weren't charging the residents, uh, Mayor, which in the past, we were charging one hundred and seventy-five dollars. We had a limited program where there was no charge for that. Is that, that's, is that completed?
Uh, no, we still have a few of those trees left.
Okay, but what my concern is that I wanna make sure it's systematic, that we have, and again, Mayor, I know this is administrative, but it could be done regarding order, regarding this, this option, this, uh, particular passing. I wanna make sure that whoever's tree is taken out, that they get a notice, unless you have a different method that will indicate if you'd like your tree replaced, please contact, cuz I know there's several different species that now can fit in those easements.
Correct, we, we are not going with the standard silver maples that we planted throughout Dearborn for a hundred years that created a lot of, uh, the ongoing issues, and they're very brittle. Um, no, we will be in communication with the homeowners, because it's a multi-step process, right? Not only do we remove the tree, we remove the stump. If you have a sprinkler system, there's potential damage, we, we make repairs to them. Uh, if you take a new tree to be planted on your easement, there's also communications that we have with you about watering and, uh, what not to do. We sleeve the bottom so that your weed whopper doesn't knock the bottom off of it. Um, there are changes that we've made to our program to ensure that if we plant a tree on your property, that you have the best option of having it survive. And these are things that we've done forward, so we are currently working to replant as many as we can.
Okay.
Secure their future.
All right, and then is that, and those residents that do choose, they will have to share in the cost of that easement tree?
We'll determine that based on how many. I believe I still have about four hundred trees.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, and we continually, our grants, uh, manager or grants director has secured some things with Friends of the Rouge and other, uh, pieces. We're actively looking for grants to replace these trees. If we can find them and someone will grant them to us, uh, be glad to give them to residents.
Okay, so, uh, for my colleagues that heard that, and I know Councilman Paris and Enos had offered and supported this, I I think I would just like to amend or or just offer that we add to it that we shall get a report at the completion of this contract, that out of the one thousand removed, how many, uh, residents did opt for a tree? Do you think that's, is that something that you could do?
Absolutely, that, that's no issue whatsoever.
Councilman Enos? Councilman Paris? So if we can just make that note to amend, Jackie, for the, for the, for the resolution, just to amend to, reports shall be provided for the council within ninety days of completion of the contract, indicating out of the one thousand trees, how many residents opted for, uh, the, the tree itself. So I do appreciate it, and for some of the residents that are out there, I mean, for a longstanding, uh, time, the council and the administration would provide these trees in the easements with the input of the resident. I mean, it's kind of those, one of the things where it's not your property, but you're, you're taking care of it, so.
Right.
You know, it's, it's a partnership with the city, so we ask the resident where you want a location, and in the past, the cost would be passed on to the resident, the portion of one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Correct.
So since there's no cost, uh, to the resident for these four hundred that you have remaining. So since there's no cost to the resident for these four hundred that you have remaining, I think it's a great opportunity to take, take hold of it. And there is many different species that don't grow, like you indicated in the past, that break up the cement, tore up your sewer lines and cause damages. And for the residents to understand, we are an older city, but we are a tree city. So that's why I want to make sure we maintain that. And my concern was is that, as you know, there's many trees that are falling and causing much more damage. So I'm glad that we're taking hold on this.
Yeah, a lot of the trees that we found over and above the five hundred were trees that were severely damaged during the storm that we had left, that we just do not have the time to go back and service, remove, cut down the tree. So we had moved on to more dangerous trees, and we're going to clean those up as well with this. I will also find out how many remaining trees we have at Cromboli and email that to council, because I'm not sure that four hundred is the number, but it's in that realm.
If you, yeah, if you don't mind, and then the standard size of their one and a half inch, is that what?
I believe that's what they are, one and a half.
If you could just include that as well, because there was some, I think I spoke to the mayor on the, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a tape measure, but they didn't look like one and a half, and the mayor indicated that was a separate grant that we received. There were different trees that we were giving away too. They were much smaller portion, because believe it or not, Director, we do get calls saying, my neighbor's tree's bigger than mine, his neighbor's tree's different than mine. So we want to be fair for that, right? All right, Councilwoman Harris?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Department Director Hawkins, for elaborating on the process that this, the city and, I guess Cromboli has been putting these trees in, is that correct?
Yes, they have.
This fall. And those tree sleeves are wonderful, and as you pointed out, for making sure that water goes down into the roots and is retained, and that education is given, a handout is given to the homeowner where the tree has been placed. I just, I don't know if you've received feedback, and I, but I have heard from several residents that they don't always receive that information, so I'm not sure how it's distributed, if they're putting it in the door, when it blows away, but.
That is the standard, rubber into the door handle or put in the door, because a lot of times we don't have emails or ways to do it, you know, so we've always done that when they're onsite, Cromboli has a flyer that they would put on the house.
Okay, well, if going into the new planting season, if we can remind them, if they can secure it as well as possible, because there are residents who really don't realize that they need to help keep that tree alive.
Yes, absolutely.
When it comes especially to the watering season and keeping it from, suffering from drought. I do have another question along the lines as well. Is there a tree plan for the city? I know that through SEMCOT Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, there's information available about the tree canopy in every city and what percentage of the tree is, the city is covered with trees. If I'm recalling correctly, and the mayor may even know the number, but I think that the tree canopy in Dearborn is in the low twenty percents. And the goal, I know that we've received the Tree City USA designation for years, and we can be proud of that.
Every year.
But that alone is not the only thing we should be looking at when it comes to the long-term impact of trees in Dearborn, and especially as the climate changes and keeping the city cooler and cleaner, and when we have environmental issues here in Dearborn, the trees can have an impact on that, as we talk about with students in the spring and planting trees at the school, in the schoolyards in partnership with the school district. But what I'm wondering is, what is the tree plan for the city? Are there details that talk about long-term, what percentage of tree canopy we look to have in the city? And if there's not such a plan, I would, because we have a health department that's looking at these considerations as well, that we develop a tree plan. So can you tell me where we are with that?
So I could speak to that, that's fine. I think what I would tell you is, one, the canopy coverage is different from neighborhood to neighborhood. Largely, the most, the vast areas that don't have trees are largely the east end and the south end, your large swaths of industrialized land. So there are certain pockets that'll never have canopy coverage. I think secondly is, you know, we've been working a lot when we get these grants in terms of planting of trees, where a lot of residents do not want them in their easements. That's one of the struggles that we have, is having people take them up to put them in their easements, but they come back and they complain for many reasons, whether it's walnuts falling off of them, the root system getting into their sewer system, and they're not being supportive of that effort. We've tried this several times. And so we haven't taken a more proactive effort in planting trees in city easements that are not on residential properties. You know, in parks, we've done many plantings along there. And so we don't have a formal canopy coverage target just yet. We're concerned with a little bit more of a public health priorities, fugitive dust, track out, deindustrializing a lot of land, which will allow for green belts. Council helped us acquire some industrialized land. There'll be a full green belt that we're building out there and adding to the green coverage that we have in our city. So we have a little bit, some larger priorities, but certainly taking into account the canopy coverage and we'll put it as we move forward. And I was on the Green Task Force for SEMCOT that established the set of metrics. I co-chaired that with the Mayor of Rochester Hills, so we're the ones who helped establish those metrics.
And I knew that, and that's why I figured you could elaborate further on it, and I appreciate that your role in that in Dearborn as well as across the region, the important work that that group is doing. So thank you for that information. I look forward to hearing more going forward.
And then Director Hawkins, if you don't mind, just as the Councilwoman indicated, that some of the leaflets, I understand, and most people, especially in Dearborn, will notice when someone's out there cutting a tree for a few hours, but if you could just reemphasize to them that literature must get to that door, we appreciate it. And Mr. Clerk, Director, I'm sorry, Clerk, you do have the modification. Councilman Perez and Inos indicated the accepted regarding notification.
Yes, I have.
To the council regarding how many did we be replacing.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Councilman Abraham.
Almost forgot me, I was gone four days.
I know.
I just want to bring to the attention of everyone that this item, in its first form, came to the council, or at least the briefing session and committee whole. And I think through collaboration, we were able to award the service contract to the two contractors that were found to be the responsible and lowest bidders. And I think that's important to note, through that process, the community, the city saved almost three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cutting down trees. So that's about twenty-five percent reduction in the cost. I think it's important to note, we're cutting down trees. Nobody wants to spend tax dollars cutting down a tree so you can replant a tree. It's a necessary service that we have to take care of for safety reasons, but I think managing the cost this way allows us to do something else with three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of funding. So I just wanted to note that and thank everybody. I know it wasn't an easy process, but sometimes when you push back a little bit, you get a little bit. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman, for bringing that up. That is absolutely what happened. We did receive an email, which we did speak with the mayor. The mayor got back with purchasing and made those calls, and the city taxpayers did save some money. So I appreciate you highlighting it. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. Just for clarification for the residents, and first off, thank you Director Hawkins for your good work. Is the program still going on? I know it's the winter time now, can residents still order that free tree? Is that still happening, or are we taking a pause during the winter time?
We basically have a standing order at Cromboli, who is our arborist, our nursery that grows the trees. They could place an order through, I believe it was on the city website. They can contact my office at any time, give us an address. I mean, we've been trying to seek out places to plant these trees all summer long. They have been open and available. We've done some posts on this. Yeah, it's been on social media. Council President talked about trees.
Yeah.
You know, it's open and available.
So it's still going during the winter time?
As supply, as supplies left.
No, we will not plant a tree now until the spring. But you can get it ordered, we can get placement, we can have everything prepped and ready when the ground untold, well, it's not frozen yet, but when it does, we can plant the tree for its best.
Order it now, you'll have it back in the spring. As far as the leaflets, I know one of the processes is to fill out the application online.
Yep.
So there should be an email there, and I'm pretty sure you already know this, so maybe that's one way to communicate with people as they fill out the application, you already have their email.
Yes.
But that's for a new tree.
That's not for the ones that we are removing off of the easement.
I think Councilwoman Harris was talking about the removal and then the replanning, but.
Anyone request him, I do have their information.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments on the tree contract? Hopefully they perform as stated on.
We will be on top of them.
All right, and immediate effect was requested as well, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Hearing and seen, no other objections. Unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-eight, resolution by council members Herrick and Elswafi, awarding a contract to Al's Asphalt LLC in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, with a five percent contingency in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, sixteen dollars for tennis court replacement at Crowley Park. Also authorizing the finance director to transfer five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars from the six thirty-four fund to project I five zero six two four, to the four zero one fund and project one, I'm sorry, I five zero six two four, and to recognize and appropriate the transfer in the four oh one fund, project I five oh six two four, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Parks Recreation has identified the need to renovate heavily-used Crowley Park tennis courts, which were last renovated in nineteen ninety-five, which is a very good year. As part of the renovation project, not only will the tennis courts be completely renovated to provide safer playing surfaces, but all-new fencing, LED lightings will be installed around the courts as well. The Recreation and Parks Department, in conjunction with Purchasing, recommends the award of contract renovation of the tennis courts at Crowley Park to Al's Asphalt. Al's Asphalt recently completed the renovation at two basketball and two tennis courts in Lapeer Park in the south end of Dearborn, has requested the finance director to be authorized to transfer five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars from the six thirty-four fund in project I five zero six two four to the four oh one fund in project I five zero six two four, and to recognize and appropriate the transfer in the four oh one fund to project I five zero six two four. The project will be completed in the summer of twenty twenty-four, and immediate effect is being requested. Just for myself, Mayor, I know that we have talked many times regarding upgrading the parks, and I want our residents to know not only the commitment from the mayor and the administration, but from the council. When you go twenty-five and thirty years, it's, it can happen, folks, where budget concerns or directions are not to reinvest or not to re-update. If those that have been watching the council and our director in Recreation can attest compared to other cities, the amount of money that we are putting into our parks is not only vast, but it's well, well-needed. Some of them are twenty, twenty-five years. Some of them will have a cost recovery much faster because of lighting. Some things that are also, I'll be honest with you, Mayor, like, for example, I'd like to bring up the Divine Child situation. You know, I work outside the city, and there's other areas in neighboring cities where I see the home of Divine Child hockey. Now we could say we have the home of Divine Child baseball, because instead of the fields being unused under the direction of the mayor and the council, we put superior grading, partner with our schools, right? And now we have a Class A baseball fields that can be used for our high school in our area, and then also for bringing tournaments in. So when you do see a lot of these things going through the council, keep in mind that many of them, and I try to highlight, many of them are twenty and twenty-five years past the useful life. I can say on my tenure, in the first eight years, very few projects were brought forward for any maintenance or redone regarding fencing or ballfields or parks. So I want to thank Mayor for your leadership on that, and for the residents to understand too, as the mayor indicated, this council obliged the mayor by making, budgeting similar to what the mayor had done as a state rep, and allowed him to take ten million dollars of ARPA money, federal tax dollars, and quadruple, well, triple it, and get thirty million with our state and county partners, which is what you're seeing being passed throughout the time. So again, I just want to let the residents know what's going on and thank, thank the administration for what we are doing in these parks, because it is being noticed significantly throughout our city.
Just one note, because I'm seeing the comments already on Facebook, people ask me, what's coming to my park? So we're trying, we're trying to ensure that the parks dollars are spread as vastly as we can. We're going to the most need, we're looking at centralized, larger parks that can have some of these larger playgrounds and investments, because they're surrounded by, you know, many neighborhoods. We have like fifty-plus parks, if you even count those small corner pocket parks. So we're doing our best to make the investments as we go. I don't know if every fifty will get touched with a multimillion-dollar inclusive playscape, but we're doing our best to make sure every park gets a little bit of love.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President. And Council President, only because you brought up about Lovegood Park and Divine Child, it should be noted too, that Divine Child donated one hundred thousand dollars towards that, you know, some of the work that was done.
Oh, no, no, no question. That was their signage, Mayor, and I think you could speak on that, but that's what I said, a partnership. I agree with you. I don't believe that a fine city, just like we have our arts and our library, we need to partner with our institutions and our schools. But absolutely, Councilman, you're right, there is a partnership which requires investment on both sides, but it does make, make our city more attractive and keeps our, keep us going in the right direction. So absolutely.
I just wanted to inquire, since we were talking about Crowley Park, and of course, we were talking about Ford Woods and Crowley Park with the new park renovations that are going to take place there. But while we're on the subject of Crowley Park, though, I don't know if the recreation director could possibly talk about then, what are we doing about the splash pad at Crowley Park? What kind of renovations there?
We revised the operations of the splash pad and the mechanics this last summer. As a part of the inclusive playscape, we've actually asked the designer to see if they can retrofit the spouts at the splash pad with the same theme as the playscape. And so they'll actually be bringing forward that proposal. That money's also earmarked within the ARPA allocation, the Peace Parks Grant. And so as they bring that forward, we'll see if we can bring that in design, so we can have one matching design between the splash pad and the playscape. But the mechanics refixed this last summer.
That's, that's great to hear. And then it would bring up the question then about, I know Hemlock needs some work with the splash pad and what more holes.
The splash pad retrofits largely at Hemlock and Crowley. And then obviously, the design for the three pools that are remaining, some receivers tend to come in Lapeer, that'll be coming forward to council in the first quarter of the new year. We had a company that council approved, and then all the plans for what those renovations will look like. But that'll be a new updated, you know, pool area and restrooms and such for those last remaining pools that are over seventy-five years old now.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Seventy-five years, absolutely.
Yeah, seventy-five.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing and seen on, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Yes, item number twenty-nine was issued by council members Perez and Inos, awarding a contract to Pentura LLC in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for the installation of the new shelter at Pine Linden Park, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. A new fifteen-by-twenty iconic shelter with a metal roof and a new cement pad is set to replace a twenty-five-year-old structure, which is crumbling concrete at Pine Linden Park. This will allow the residents of the Snow Woods neighborhood and bordering neighborhoods to enjoy for many years to come. The Recreation and Parks Department, in conjunction with Purchasing, recommends the award of contract for the installation of the new shelter at the Pine Linden Park to Pentura LLC's. Pentura's is currently developing a design for the Morningside Park in the south end of Dearborn renovation right now. The requested amount for the project is fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Funding for this project is coming from the Wayne County IGA funds. Work will be, begin in the spring of twenty twenty-four, and the project should take, take four weeks to complete, and immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seen on, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item number thirty, resolution by council members Herrick and Perez, awarding a sole-source contract to DA Central in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents for installation of dual sensor cameras at Hubbard Manor East and West, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In a continued effort to bring our facilities and properties to a standard with twenty-four-seven with 24/7 monitoring, there is a need for additional cameras in the hallways of Hubbard Manor East and the West buildings. These additions will allow for necessary coverage of high-traffic areas for viewing of the city staff, along with the police department. The installation for dual sensors, security cameras, are to be installed on every floor of the buildings, which will allow for better monitoring and is critical for the safety of our residents. This request is to authorize the award of a contract to DA Central with the project cost of $37,185 for Hubbard Manor West, and $30,609.8 for Hubbard Manor East, for a total of $67,610.93. Immediate effect is being requested to begin the project immediately. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing is seen none. Unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 32, resolution by council members Parrish and Al Sowafi, authorizing the mayor's office to renew the citywide membership with the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $18,481 for the period of December 1st, 2023, to November 30th, 2024, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The mayor's office requests our authorization to renew the citywide membership with the Michigan Municipal League, or MML, for a period of December 1st, 2023, through November 30th, 2024. The MML membership provides the city of Dearborn with a collective voice in state capital on issues that concern our city. The membership also networks the city elected officials, the top appointee officials, with the experience and ability of municipal leaders statewide, and provides access to resources used to manage common issues. Additionally, the MML advocates funding crucial services via the use of tax dollars, works with policymakers to focus on economic development initiatives and resources towards building out communities, works with elected officials to ensure the effective funding of transportation infrastructure systems, and provides environmental quality and encourages tax dollar uses for environmental projects and initiatives. The cost of the citywide membership is $18,481, and this MML is something that the council uses throughout the year for training and information that we need to give a collaborative effort when we're working with zoning ordinances as well, so really well-needed. Councilman Parrish.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank the administration and the council for continuing to support our partnership with the Michigan Municipal League. As Council President discussed, the MML gives us networking opportunities with other municipalities, and the information and collaboration that we need on behalf of our residents. One example would be the short-term rentals we were talking about earlier tonight. At the state level, there's been legislation that's been discussed, gone back and forth between the state senate and the House of Representatives, and the Michigan Municipal League advocates on behalf of our residents when it comes to those types of issues. And they provide information to us as local legislators about what's happening at the state level, and we can share information with each other about how we might be able to address these things on a local level. In addition, as Council President mentioned, they offer a lot of networking and particularly training, especially for newly-elected officials, on what our roles are and our responsibilities are in being responsible legislators. For example, observing the Open Meetings Act, making sure that we are following state law, and things like working on the budget. You know, if it's not something that was part of our background to work on those kinds of things, the Michigan Municipal League has a lot of resources and training in that respect as well. So I've taken advantage of that, and I know some of my colleagues have as well. So thank you.
Yes, it's an excellent resource, and it does help us stay on course. So it's a good resource. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing is seen none. Unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 33, resolution by council members Parrish and Inos, concurring in the appointment of Ahmed Al Sufi to the Dix Verner Business District Improvement Authority with a term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this item is for Ahmed Al Sufi to serve on the Dix Verner Business District Improvement Authority for a four-year term ending June 30th, 2027, and immediate effect is being requested. I do want to thank Mr. Sufi. These are volunteer positions. The boards are very vital to the council and to the administration and to help our city go. So I'd like to thank everyone that is serving on a board. There was some question regarding dates regarding this, Mayor? Was that clarified? Any term or filling term? Do you have that data? No?
Was the info sent to council or no?
Yeah, Chief?
The dates for the appointments.
Okay, yes.
I can speak to it. There was an update to it, yeah, so it was correct.
Yeah, if the attorney has it, we didn't have it at the council. We were concerned they were filling vacancies, so if the term... Our understanding, if you correct me, Mr. Romer.
An abandonment, yeah.
Is that we have to fill the remaining term, and then the new term would start after, we'd have to then approve that? Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so that was our concern. So was this a vacant term that was expired?
No, they're all new.
Okay, so just, yeah.
Vayna Hussain, Chief of Staff. They are all new terms.
New terms?
Yeah, so you see that the date of the end of the term is 2020... I just checked it before coming up.
It's June 30th or 27th, so it's four... We were concerned, Chief, that's a consecutive, that's a solid four-year block. So that means that the vacancy is filled immediately after somebody left, or was there already a vacancy?
There were already vacancies. I can, I'm almost 99.9% sure.
There are existing vacancies or renewals.
We understand there's existing vacancies. I think, Mr. Romer, can you shed... Do you understand what I'm getting at, or no?
Yeah, so when somebody vacates the appointment, the new appointed or the one that fills that role serves the remainder of the term, unless it's a term that expires, then they fulfill their...
Right, so the question from the council was, it appears that both of these are complete full terms.
Correct.
That's correct.
So it contradicts that they were filling vacancies.
Well, we mean a vacancy means, yeah, no one's ever been appointed for that seat.
Yes.
It's not somebody vacated that current existing appointment on a full board. And so another thing to note is that we examined all of our boards, not every member of your board. We're staggered, right? We don't have, you know, 100 board members all expiring on the same day. That would create chaos across all of our boards and across...
We understand that.
That's why you see some are, you know, yeah, this is four years out.
Okay, so the answer would be then that this term is filling a new, complete full term?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Romer, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Parrish.
Just to further that question that I brought up during the committee of the whole then, why would we be doing that now instead of, I believe it's June, when we fill the boards and commissions? You know, so you're actually looking at a four-and-a-half-year term as opposed to six months till June 30th, and then reappoint a vacant, one vacant position that I think that we had talked about during the committee of the whole. Because all three of them, one is on the consent agenda, because it's a reappointment. These are not reappointments, but they're all expiring June of 2027.
Well, if I can, yeah, that's a good question. I know, but, Mr. Romer, the council has a longstanding paragraph that we've added to all of these appointments that indicate that it has to comply with the rules and regulations, because this is what happens, someone will come up and say, "Is this filling an engineer, or is this filling this?" Each commission or each board has a specific qualification, so it's the council's understanding that it is to be fulfilled within that parameter. So, Mr. Romer, are you looking up the Dix corridor?
Yeah, and their appointments, they're not reappointments.
I guess if the council president, if you can just...
We're talking about a new appointment that was empty.
Yes.
But the point is, Mr. Romer, this is a four-and-a-half-year term. Does the ordinance require a four... Does the ordinance allow a four-and-a-half-year term?
A four-and-a-half?
I'd have to...
Appointing in January would be...
Well, to answer that, I don't know if I can answer that question without looking at the code, because some boards and commissions have three, some have four, some have six. So I'd have to look at the code.
I know, but that's why the question was asked at the committee of the whole on, just to make sure. I mean, I don't think anybody has a problem with appointments. Our concern is that it's done properly. When we see a term that's more than four years, and a new appointee...
Is this really more than four?
How do you got it?
If you appoint now, and it's six months to June 30th of '24.
And three years.
18 months to June 30th of '25. Twenty...
Three and a half?
I think it's three and a half, it's not four and a half.
Okay.
I guess the initial question that was, and thank you, council, I'm sorry.
The seat's been, the term started July 1st, and it's been vacant from July 1st of this year to December.
Okay, so you're getting a three and a half.
So this is completing another term then?
An existing unfilled term.
Yes.
Okay, because that's, I think that's what Councilman Parrish is...
This is what I'll say.
That's part of it.
So we have well over 100-plus, you know, commissions.
I know, I know, we're talking about this one.
Yeah, and I understand. I guess what the councilman is trying to get at is why...
One meeting, one meeting, one meeting. Chief, go ahead.
Yep, so I guess what the councilman is trying to get at, and just to ensure that we're asking the right question, is, you know, why is the mayor appointing this position currently? And I think what I'll say is, as I started, was we have well over 100-plus commissions that the mayor's office looks at. Obviously, the mayor just indicated that many of them are staggered, which means they don't all come at once. And this new process that we've put in place when this administration took place was, we actually interview every person. We review every... So there's additional steps that are taken. We are working towards creating a more cohesive system that makes these appointments more efficient and based on, you know, the timeline that's given. But if the question is, "Why is it coming before you now?", it's because we had an applicant that was interested. We interviewed the applicant, and now it's before you for your decision, which you all have the purview to make the decision on whether or not you want to appoint this individual.
Thank you. I think the question was the term, was more of a term, and if it was filling a vacancy, but it is filling a vacancy.
If I may, this is an appointment that covers a term already in progress, but it's not a reappointment, because there was nobody in the seat prior.
Which makes, now, it makes sense.
The councilwoman here just did, if you want to repeat what you...
Yeah, it's an existing position that wasn't filled, but in the middle of a term, as Corporation Council was just saying. So I guess the question is, is it a four-year term for those positions? And Councilman Abraham was doing the math. Is it a four-year term, and then we're 10 months, or 11 months, whatever? No, from June to now, eight months into the four-year existing term. And so it's like a three-year plus, seven months of a four-year term. Is it a four-year term for that particular commission?
But these positions are four-year terms, correct.
Because we're appointing now.
Yeah, because as you said, some are six years, some are different. But this is a four-year term, and we're partway into it.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Parrish?
I still think we're confusing this, that it is a vacancy. When would this vacancy expire?
2027, June, as written on the memo.
June 30th, 2027, that's my understanding.
Okay, so we're going to fulfill the existing term through 2027?
That nobody vacated, but was, okay.
Right.
Because it began June of 2023.
Any more questions I can assist with?
Yeah, I want you to stay just a minute, we got another one, just in case.
Okay, so I'm here.
Mr. Romer, if you can, for the council, I had written a paragraph, I think with your help, regarding all these commissions. Just for clarification, there was a pass, under the past administration, there was over 100 people that were never confirmed by the council. Over 100, so they all had to come at one time. So as the council president, I want to make sure that each one of these... Jack, if you can, make sure you get that from Jeremy. Jeremy, if you, Mr. Romer, you remember, there's a recall that, a paragraph that you helped write that indicates that these fulfill the commitments required under the commission's ordinance. That's all we're asking, just so we can make sure. It's impossible for us to look and say, "Does this person, is this person fit the time", and so on, or "fit the qualifications" of each individual, okay? So we'll make sure that it's added. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments on this? And again, I want to thank him for his service. Hearing is seen none. Unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
Item 34, resolution by council members Parrish and Parrish, concurring in the appointment of Carl Musick to the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority with a term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this is for Mr. Carl Musick to serve on the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors for a term, for a four-year term with immediate effect ending on June 30th, 2027. And again, we'd like to thank Mr. Musick for his service and volunteering to the city. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing is seen none. Unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
No further items from the clerk, thank you.
All right, excellent. From the council, I'd just like to, since this is our last meeting for the year, just, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy holiday and New Year season. I wanted to thank all our employees for the tremendous work they've done this year, not only in the public service and public safety, but our hard-working people at our DPW and all our departments for the work they've done to make Dearborn what it is today. You know, there was a few residents that came up earlier that spoke, and I think it hit a chord, and I wanted to share this. You know, we are very, very fortunate. There's some people that, you know, I always say, "I'd never come up with a complaint without trying to find a solution." That's just how I was raised and how I am. There's other peoples that just like to complain no matter what. But I think it's time for the city, and especially this time of the year, to look back and really know how lucky we are, especially what's going around in the world. You know, my colleagues and the time that we spend doing this for the public service of our community is an honor. And it's something that I think sometimes it's overlooked. I mean, you know, you put your name on a ballot to serve. Nobody's up here doing it for the money, I can tell you that. And there is a lot of work that does happen, and there's a lot of good things that do happen. For sure, there's a lot of criticism, and your families put up for criticism. But at the end of the day, when you hear a gentleman like that came in earlier that talked about helping others in a religious aspect, whether you're religious or not, you know, when you look at the end of the year and are very thankful for what you have and what you've done and where you're going, it's great to be part of the city of Dearborn. It really is. For me, you know, whether my history and my family lineage, my mom running and been on the council for 24 years. For me, when I ran, I wanted to make sure that I contributed as much as I could to our community. And I could tell you, with a new mayor coming on, it was... No matter who it was at that time, we didn't know. I was very pleased to stay and contribute my portion. So I wanted to make sure that our staff, our council staff, Jackie, and is recognized, because there's a lot of work that we have to do in that, and to serve. Even though I am the administrator of this body, we have six or seven individual autonomy elected personnel. And I wanted to thank them all for their work, and look forward to a great new year. We have two years under the belt. I think we've accomplished a lot in two years. I hope that the residents has an opportunity to see the newsletter that came to their house twice a year. Initiatives, it's nice, and I want to really thank the mayor for the amount of grants and departments. Folks, we could come up with all the ideas in the world. If you don't have the money to do it, it's not going to work. I'm very pleased to say that we have continued to fund our obligations, and I really can't thank the mayor enough for having a grants department that has generated, I don't want to take the thunder, Mayor, but close to $40 million over a short term. It's a lot of money, folks, and that lessens the burden on our taxpayers. But it allows this group to say, "We want to have a Clean Streets crew", where they can go out and clean it, and clean our city, and make sure our city's running right. And I see them out there driving around and picking up litter and blight, because I believe in, if we clean it up, others will be less to put it out. And my colleagues agreed, and we funded that issue during our budget time. So I know it's in its infancy, but if you see the Clean Streets campaign out in your neighborhood, Clean Streets, Healthy Streets campaign, as the mayor's, he's good at this. We come up with the idea, and the mayor gets the name and the jingle to it, but it's working. It's a two-way street, folks. Because I never forget, when I was a kid, seeing residents, my neighbors walking in the neighborhood and picking up little garbage in buckets. We all have to contribute to it. And we just realize that there's a situation right now where it's... Maybe it's generational, but it's a different. And this body decided to say, "Hey, we're not going to have it in Dearborn. And if there's blight, if you see blight, please contact our city, and they will get a crew out there to make sure that it's cleaned up." So again, I want to thank everybody for a wonderful year, and I wish everybody a great, happy holidays and happy new year. Anyone else from the council? Councilman Parrish.
Thank you, Council President. I might like to ask, though, do we have any update yet in regards to the vehicle charging stations at our parks?
They've been installed.
At Ford Woods?
I'll double-check if it's been installed at the Ford Woods, I assume, but I know they've already started, they've begun to install them.
I've seen them at Ford Field and the Performing Arts Center.
Correct.
And you said Ford Woods. What are the other locations they're supposed to go to?
I forget the five locations we select. I think there's four locations with five installations.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I must have missed.
I think one of them was an open parking lot. We haven't posted about it yet, we're anticipating the post coming soon, so we'll post about it on social media.
Okay, and that was in conjunction with a local business as well?
That was Les Danford, who paid for the chargers, and 50% of the install through their relationship with GM.
Absolutely, yeah, it was a great project. It was approved by the council. But, yeah, mayor, when you do get the update, just let us know, it'd be nice.
Yeah, yeah, we'll post about it.
And I know that there's been a lot of social media publications by the city recently too about the loose leaf pickup and through this week, December 15th.
Correct.
Still getting a lot of inquiries, though, about a large amount of leaves on some of the side streets and wondering if it's still maybe picked up in the future, or you're still going to leave it up to the residents, or... You know, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot about this, but I've even noticed it in my neighborhood, you know.
Yeah, no, Councilman Paris, I think it's well pointed. I think the director will shed light. I think they had some issue with a truck. So that is a good question because, I know I had called in the street that they're still on that Scott.
Yep, Tim Hawkins, DPW director. We are still out picking them up. We put a cutoff date because whenever we stop, at least for two to three weeks afterward, everybody rakes their leaves out into the street. The cutoff date is December 15th for the end. You're supposed to bag your leaves after that. We are going to continue to clean up whatever's remaining in the streets, but after the 15th, you're supposed to really bag your leaves.
How are we going to go about doing it, though? Are you out there identifying areas or relying on people calling in?
No, I have, I have 30 people out working on it right now. Yeah, throughout the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Director Hawkins, in the past, we used to put out, like, information regarding where they're going at certain times.
Yeah.
Is that still, still happening?
Well, we did that throughout leaf season where they were headed to. We're trying to clean up the heavier-hit zones. We're finding most of it is in the west. We've gotten most of the east end of Dearborn cleaned up. It seems like a larger amount fell in the last weekend in that warm weather, or people finally got out and cleaned out their, raked up their leaves, so...
And the other thing I want to bring a note of, we're evaluating the leaf pickup program in terms of the process. So the way it's done now is it's associated with your garbage day.
Right.
And what tends to be a shortcoming of that is, we'll come to your garbage district. If we can't finish it, we have to abandon that neighborhood and go to the next garbage district the next day. That's how it's currently done, that's how it's always been done. What we want to explore the next year is like, this week, we're going to be in this whole neighborhood. Until we finish that neighborhood, then we'll move on and not follow with service day. The reason it's always followed service day is that's when you know to keep your car out of, off the street. And so we got to find a way to communicate with residents that for these next few days, you got to keep your cars off the street because we want to come to your neighborhood in one full swoop before moving on to the next neighborhood.
No, mayor, it makes perfect sense, but just for director, I mean, we had supplied a supplemental contract so that you could get it all done in the public service days.
Yeah, there is, there is an astronomical amount that comes down. It is, it's not possible to do like the Monday district, which is the largest out of the five in one day.
So that, I know, but that's what we were instructed when we had that supplemental contract. So the supplemental contract is not enough to get it done.
Not enough, not with the volume that comes down.
What about the trucks? Because I know we had a lot of social media regarding the trucks and the vector. You know, I know the mayor...
Yeah, they're absolutely great. What they do is they keep employees out of harm's way, so...
Well, it also reduces the number of employees as well.
Correct, but if we look to neighboring cities, like I think it's Lebon York Canton that operates 16-plus of those trucks, right? So we have two that joined our fleet and hopefully make more investments to come. The last one I'll say is the one variable we can't account for is when the leaves fall. For example, the giant tree on my lawn doesn't fall, doesn't fall ever in my period that when the neighborhood actually comes to do it, it always falls after it's completed. It always falls first week of December or last week of November. And that's just the other variable you can't account for.
Okay, so director, I think you heard where we're at. But if any of the council members do see, because I know I called in, Councilman Paris, regarding all the still large piles that are discolored, which means they've been there for a while. So hopefully we can get it going. But mayor, I do appreciate that, the fact that we know that we started with two, but we have to find a way to complete it in the time that we do let the residents know, so...
Yep, I agree.
Councilman Abraham?
Not to steal the floor, I just answered it, but I'll just, we're talking leaf pickups. I think this is the longest-standing Dearborn debate.
That's right.
How, when to pick up leaves and how to get it done faster. And I'll just tell you, as long as I've been here, there's no fast way to do it. And there's no good way to do it the way we do it. It's just not efficient, it's never going to be efficient. And if anybody's listening out there, the best way to do it is to have everybody bag their own leaves. And then we can very easily and effectively pick them up from the curb in yard waste bags. But honestly, we could, we could have a whole study session on this. We went from how you described, mayor, of trying to complete a section before moving to the next section. People didn't like that. They complained that they were going to be last. Somebody's got to be last.
Of course.
And it's, you know, it's not going to be your neighborhood, right?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to say what street I live on.
I'm joking, I'm joking. But no, but that, rotating through public service days was a way to try and get the vehicles off the streets.
Correct.
Bulk pickup.
Yep.
We used to bring them back. Now we dump them in specific locations to try and be more efficient. I think at the end of the day, the leaves are going to fall when they fall, and we're going to be stuck picking them up. Or we're going to plow them to the curb, and we're going to pick them up in the spring.
And I want to make one other point, that under leadership Hawkins, we actually sent Susheni and a few others to other cities to see how they do the leaf pickup program. We got a lot of feedback. We try to offer like two pickups per season. Most other cities say, this is the one week we're coming through when we're done. It's a one pickup because if we, if you kind of monitor when all the leaves fall, you're going to be there forever. So we're trying to take the best of what other municipalities, how they do it, what equipment they're using. We also evaluated the equipment that they use, and we're evaluating it relative to ours as well. But to your point, it's never going to be a perfect program.
Final note, we are Dearborn, we're going to pick the leaves up.
That's right.
What other communities do, that's up to them.
Yeah.
But you're challenged, and Hawkins, Director Hawkins is challenged with Dearborn standards of service, and we go above and beyond what everybody else has.
Thank you, Director, Councilman Paris?
I'm going to cut this short, then. I know we had some speakers earlier about short-term rentals. And I know there was comments made by department heads or the mayor that we will be looking into this. I just want to emphasize it because, you know, I don't know how the other council members are on this, but I get a lot of inquiries about it, either through the Dearborn Federation of Neighborhood Associations for the last several years. It is something that needs to be looked at, no matter where you fall on the spectrum, you know, as property owner rights or neighborhoods being affected or cities being affected by it. But we really do need to look at this. I'm not going to go any further into that because some comments were already made. I do want to make mention, though, that I do want to, like our council president stated, you know, wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, you know, Happy Hanukkah. And Orthodox Christians, some of our residents that participate and are celebrating, you know, comes up after the first of the year, I believe it's January 7th. And also want to recognize Kwanzaa celebrations between December 26th and January 1st. Thank you, everyone, and have a safe and glorious holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else from my colleagues? Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, council president. I'd like to wish each and every one of you up here and around the room, all employees and residents across the city, Merry Christmas and a joyful holiday season. We know that many residents here in Dearborn are suffering at the loss of family members here and abroad, or feared for family and friends abroad. And I'd like to keep them in our wishes at this time. The strength of our community is our spirit of hope and that we take action and support each other in times that are happy and not so happy. And we've seen that over the past few months especially. And then during this holiday season, we have so many organizations that come together and bring the, bring up community support, from the Goodfellows to the Toys for Tots campaign that kicked off at the police station yesterday, to, you know, delivering food to those in need. We've got our senior division at the Performing Arts Center. There are several different food distribution programs that go on all year long. So those of us who are fortunate enough to not have to think about those things and worry about those things, whether we're here in this room or across the city, we do, we step up and we help take care of each other. But especially right now, you know, remember those who don't have, necessarily have the family and support of friends that we may have. And I wish you all joy and peace in knowing the goodness, the good feelings that come from helping others today and always. So Merry Christmas.
Thank you, thank you, councilman. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so everybody else wished everybody a happy holidays, so I won't skip over that part. But I think one thing I just wanted to point out, it was, so it's been a year since we had Councilman Enos join us, and I just want to say it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah. Thank you, councilman, that's a good one, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's nice to have one other Edsel person in the room. I'm tired of being told I went to Fortson.
Thank you everyone for being so cordial to me and helping me out this first year. I really appreciate it, everyone's been great, especially Jackie.
All right, excellent, excellent.
You guys present our files now.
There you go.
Yeah, and then we're going to be having a volleyball game, what is it? Edsel versus Fortson on Friday?
Yeah.
So, you know, unfortunately, I think Gary has some sports injuries, so I'm going to have to represent the Edsel aspect.
I don't know, Edsel has sports teams.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, so I'm going to have to be fit enough for everybody, I guess.
You can do it, that's going to be fun.
So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else from my colleagues? Mayor, anything from the administration?
Yeah, I think to Councilman Paris's point, we're supportive of a trilateral ordinance. I think it's subject to council, through council president scheduling the study sessions, just to put that out there. A few things, you know, there are so many accomplishments that we can speak to that have happened this last year.
Absolutely.
But rather than speak, you know, there'll be a video that drops about, you know, the top highlights for the year. But I want to tell you that there's going to be a big announcement tomorrow. And so we have another accomplishment to tag on before the year is done. So look out for that announcement tomorrow. It'll be, you know, big digits, that's all I'll say. So we're really excited for tomorrow's announcements. We have, in the atrium, you'll see a bunch of poster boards around on tables. We have a strong partnership with the University of Michigan, and they provide us with fellows and students and working with our community relations department. They actually evaluate how residents interact with the city. And so they put out their many ideas about how to tackle some of the simple day-to-day issues that residents have. So I want to implore the council to take a look. Yesterday, yesterday, we launched a transformative partnership between Corwell, Dearborn, and Honeymoon College. It's the first of its kind anywhere. And it's actually the city of Dearborn that helps spearhead this effort through the Bloomberg Harvard program.
Yes.
And this is about making Dearborn the workforce capital and a talent hub. And so for the first time ever, there'll be a $9,000-plus scholarship for Honeymoon nurses, which is the largest nursing, two-year nursing program in the state of Michigan, plus a guaranteed job within Corwell, Dearborn upon graduation. So you don't have to apply, the job is already guaranteed for you with the opportunity to work at Corwell while you're in school. And so this is the first-of-its-kind partnership. It took us a long time to ink this contract and bring those stakeholders to the table. But this is the type of transformative work that the workforce, the workforce development coordinator that the council supported will get to work on. It's bringing the stakeholders to the table and making sure that these types of pathways are established. And it's funny because, you know, my mom and my sister are on me right now. My sister graduated nursing school, she's applying for jobs, and she's trying to tell me if I can talk to Corwell for her.
You got to make the call.
And I'm at this press conference, and I was like, she should have went to Honeymoon. And so that's phenomenal. And lastly, I think to the points of council earlier, Merry Christmas to all, Happy Hanukkah to all, to all those celebrating this holiday season with your loved ones. Wish you the very best to those around the world who, you know, obviously to those in Palestine and Gaza who are suffering, our hearts are with them. And honestly, I just feel extremely privileged and blessed. I came into, you know, I was elected to office with, you know, zero children and, you know, with the blessings of God, I'm at two daughters, and I'm extremely thankful for that. God bless my wife, and just really happy to go in the holiday season with those that I love around me. It's a privilege, I understand that, and want to make sure that I keep all those who are suffering across the globe in my prayers and my thoughts, and obviously wishing the best of the best to our Dearborn residents.
Thank you, mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, well, of course, I would also extend my season's greetings to everyone. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone for the new year. Councilwoman Herrick mentioned Toys for Tots, and I wanted to emphasize that and say we have until December 15th to collect those toys. We have boxes available at the clerk's offices through the end of the week. Also, of course, you know about the police department, you can also drop off your toys there. But the toys are definitely in need this year, so if anybody hears this message, please spread it, that the toys are very, very important. Also, I want to mention that next year is a big, 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 did I say big?
Yes.
Election year, not only here in Dearborn, but across the United States. Of course, we'll be electing a president in November again. Voter turnout is going to be huge this year. There's another option, it's called early voting. It's going to start in the presidential primary this February. You'll be hearing a lot more about that. You'll probably be sick of hearing about it because we're going to be on it quite a bit in the next month and letting people know what the procedures are, what you can do to vote early on top of absentee voting and voting on election day. I've already filmed a segment with Councilmember Paris on this, and I think we're going to be doing a follow-up also on it, just to let people know. It's a big deal, you'll be able to vote nine days before election day, but we'll get that information out to you. It's a pleasure to be your clerk, and I really appreciate all the support. Thank you.
Of course, thank you, clerk.
Be a big job coming forward, so hopefully we've given you all the support you can. And I know you'll be letting people know about the volunteers. I know there's a lot of people that like to volunteer during this time, and it really does help our political process. At this time, we are now open to our second and final public comment meeting before the close of the meeting. Anyone here that would like to address the council regarding city business? Please step forward and state your, yeah, absolutely, come forward. He is a resident.
Tim Hawkins, resident of Dearborn in the Soda neighborhood, longtime listener, first-time speaker. I'm a little nervous about this. I just want to remind everybody, on December 15th, the Dearborn Goodfellows will be having their packing night
Yes.
at the Ford Autobody Shop over on 23841 Keene Street. And then for those that cannot make that but could help on Saturday, we will do package delivery.[1733.84]